And thank you to the Navajo Nation tribal parks for allowing us to use this space today. We do appreciate the opportunity to be here in Utah and in the surrounding communities. So it's good to be here today. I just wanted to check with all our audio, all our everything is set up, everything's good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Karen. We have Mr. Trey here, Leslie, Tereba Michelle. Thank you for being here. And of course, we have our IT with us today. So it looks like we're all set up this morning. And so we do appreciate the members of the community for being here today. This is the fourth day of the FY 2026 Comprehensive Budget Public Hearing led by the Budget and Finance Committee of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. Today, we have Delegate Norman Embigay from Bohadule here with us. We have Delegate Lester Yasi with us from Bahala and Chairman Amber Kness Bakrati from Northern Agency. And I think our central agency representative today is going to be excused. And I just want to mention that today, there's a Law and Order Committee, Resource and Development Committee, and the Budget and Finance Committee all meeting today. So we do appreciate your time this morning. So I won't delay any further. I know the Law and Order Committee has a really important meeting today regarding the Chief Justice and Resource and Development Committee have several legislation on their agenda today. That's where Vice Chair Carl Slater is this morning. So we will excuse the members of the Budget and Finance Committee for the public hearing today until they arrive. Where is RDC today?
Yes.
Okay, in that. All right. I do appreciate everyone's attendance today. We're going to turn on the fan once it gets a little hot. I know that the room here, their AC is being worked on. So I won't delay any further. Just want to offer a short welcome this morning to begin our official public hearing. Let me pull up our agenda. Today is June 9, 2025. And the proposed agenda is supposed to start at 10:00 a.m. But let's call this public hearing to order at 10:16 a.m. Mr. Rodney Tahie, could you provide the roll call this morning?
Madam Chairman, members of the Budget Finance Committee, this is roll call for the Budget Finance Committee of the 25th Navajo Nation Council's public hearing for June 9, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. Roll call. Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish is present. Honorable Carl R. Slater, excuse, Honorable Norman Embigay.
Here.
Honorable Norman Embigay is present. Honorable Amber Kness Bakrati. Amber Kness Bakrati is present. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Lester C. Yasi. Honorable Lester C. Yasi is present. Madam Chair, you have four members present, but you don't need to call for this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rodney Tahie, for taking the roll call this morning for the Budget and Finance Committee. Before we begin, let's invite members of the community to provide the indication. I'll leave Mr. McCarlo Van Roenhorst to that. McCarlo Van Roenhorst is there in the back. If you all would come up to the podium this morning, we do appreciate your words this morning. Thank you.
Hi, I heard everybody. Welcome. And my name is Trintia Tracy and Animal Jato Chapter Vice President and so I would be meeting all of you guys today. I personally met everybody from this committee. So Honorable Shandine Parrish, welcome to the Maroon Valley and for being here with us today. And also, I just wanted to make a little short, Secretary Trifrona Faktor, Twilight Hudson. So she's the object projector secretary. And I'll go ahead and just make this really short. And other than being here for the state that you have given us, we have the budget committee here. We need your guidance, we need your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We need that. Anything that needs to be done pertaining to today, we will go forth. We are striving for growth. We are striving for new development. We are striving that all the people here today understand. And in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
And yet, thank you, Vice President Tracy. And yet, thank you, Vice President Tracy, for your indication this morning. Thank you, members of the Old Jato community and the chapter with you here with us. I know that Delegate Herman, I did talk to Delegate Herman Daniels yesterday. He does send his regards today. Delegate Herman Daniels is with the Law and Order Committee and they're contemplating the confirmation of the Chief Justice. So they are, they have a very heavy with, heavy with today in the Law and Order Committee. So thank you again for the indication. With that, I just want to welcome everyone to the fourth day of the public hearing for the Budget and Finance Committees. Or for the FY twenty-six comprehensive budget, look forward to your comments and sharing a little bit of information about our current. How the, how the comprehensive budget was put together. So before we get into, further into our agenda, on item number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Wanted to give a floor to Delegate Lester Yasi to open up introductions and any comments you'd like to start with. And then we'll go to Delegate Norman Embigay after. Can you, Delegate Lester Yasi, we'll go to Delegate Norman Embigay. Thank you Delegate Norman Embigay and Delegate Lester Yasi. I'll go to Shadet, you're on him, as Bakrati.
God, it's wonderful to be here in the community of Old Jato and Monument Valley. I have not been in this area since I was a young girl with my grandma. So it brings a lot of great memories. And last night, we ate at The View Hotel. It kind of reminded me of first. So I thought that was interesting, the. The quality of service out here. So I said, let's say, I have to all of our relatives, can't argue this much, though, by people, by such cheap. That's true, that's true, though, Irish people, that's another. Actually, Amber Kness Bakrati, I want to be exact with the follow-up on the text that I received from the constituent regarding the homelessness of a college student. It does sound that our division for children and family services have reached out. I think that's why we have to look at the gap of services. It shouldn't have to come all the way up to a delegate. For these on-the-ground local matters, especially if we're dealing with Navajo Nation funds. State funds and federal funds. So my hope colleagues, if we could continue, I know we're enhancing the federal system, our funding system. But I think we also need to start looking at progress because our budget is based off of performance. So Chair, I would say we need to start looking at the funding that the programs are sitting on. And I find it very interesting at Easter, so that we can start analyzing how much support services are going to different parts of the nation. To make sure there's some type of equitable distribution, understanding if there's a shortage of staff. And if programs, if they start entering agreements with the chapters and they then start providing those critical. Services to the community, not a more local level course for training, additional support costs, because we do get an IDC. Making that some of the challenges that the nation at this point has systemic challenges dividing with servicing at the local rural level. As I was driving in, I'm looking at who has access to electricity. And I hope in this conversation, as I've asked everywhere else, is please be. Please provide how many individuals in your community do not have access to running water or electricity, so that we could have a proper plan. I know we receive a lot of proposals for the objects, but it would be very hard for me on the council floor to vote for a community. Infrastructure when a majority of their elders, old children are still living without access to water and running electricity. Or running water and electricity. I think I'm kind of changing my lens. We've helped support the senior centers, so that's like access to. And case management. I know the schools are here to provide services to our children. And I think for the Navajo Nation, our goal also should be is what is the plan for each community? Get those individuals access to basic services and which includes broadband. But we have asked the private water resources for their tenure plan. So I have it on my follow-up. And we're also working on a public safety fund. So I would also like to hear some comment in. Comments for the community about the need for public safety. What does that look like when we have a chronic shortage of officers? There's other type of community policing that we see works in other parts of the country. What's, you know, how do we embed technology? And just to make sure community members are safe. And there's such. No influx of foreign. Visitors in this department. I would just think at this point, you know, the community should have some empowerment on how we want to. Police and management care here. I just wanted to bring that in terms of an observation. How we move forward with the five-year planning is what we have coming up is the five-year plan with a permanent trust fund interest. And so if there's a certified chapter in this area, they definitely can benefit from that funding. And right now, it's approximately an opportunity of just over four hundred thousand dollars for each of the current LG certified chapters annually. So we create a five-year plan that potentially can be like two million dollars. And so there's opportunities there to get grants to cost share and build up. But there has to be that incentive. And now through some of the chapters, I think some of the chapters are ready, not all one hundred and ten, but some of the chapters. I think are ready to move forward. And I would say Chair that you're pushing that chapters can invest at a local level. Because that can also give them some base amount funding, as we've seen at issue of the federal, state, and Navajo Nation level. So appreciated. I just kind of opened those comments. And it's great to be here. It's a beautiful building. We have a sister community center in Sheep Springs that you have right here. And they really have been helping with accessibility, marketing, like workforce development. So that also could be something we need to get, that it's not often in the community and how we need to support them with your programs to enter into agreements so that they can sustain services. I'm glad my colleagues here have made it. Three Mexicans. And so we'll wait for our other partners to join us. Yeah, thanks so much.
Hi, thank you, Shadet. I do appreciate your opening words and statements this morning with my colleagues on the Budget and Finance Committee. Today, we are excited to be here. It looks like we have four members of the public joining us this morning. So I wanted to go over some. Where we're at in the agenda. We're currently on recognizing guests and visiting officials. We just gave some time to the members of the Budget and Finance Committee to introduce themselves. And so to those that are participating in our audience or online today, we are calling our agenda today. And so next, we'll go to the two presentations and just number four, we'll go to the public testimony. I just want to go over some housekeeping items and then we'll get started today. But before that, I forgot, I did not introduce myself too. But I do thank you to my colleagues for being here. They traveled a long ways to be here. I only traveled thirty minutes to be here, but. I do appreciate their commitment to listening to each and every one of the members of the Navajo Nation, so that we can get a better idea how the comprehensive budget impacts services for our Navajo people. At the end of the day, we don't want to get stuck in winter off where the bureaucracy and that discussion gets stuck there. But we really want to hear how the last year's budget may have had its shortfalls, or it was not enough to cover services. Or it was inadequate in some areas. For instance, I know we have an allocation to the chapters for the veterans. So do you have any feedback on the last budget or where your current budget is sitting? We do appreciate that. And I want to congratulate all the new chapter officials. Thank you for being here and taking this opportunity to have a discussion with the Budget and Finance Committee. So thank you so much for being here. Today, we have the controller on the call. Is that correct, Mr. Rodney Tahi?
Right, yeah.
Okay, he's going to get on the call very shortly. And why the controller is important to this call is because he's going to give a presentation on the revenues that are coming into the Navajo Nation. And then he's also going to give a presentation on how much the Navajo Nation spent in the last fiscal year. I'm sure you're excited to hear about how much oil, coal, different sorts of revenues come into the nation, and he's going to go over that. So that's a little how the committee structured is. We'll go into presentations and then into public comments. If you'd like to offer public comments, please fill out a pink sheet. I have two pink sheets in front of me. So this is what the pink sheet looks like. And then you can hand it back to one of the staff members, Ms. Lys, if you're here, Karen. I'll give some time to the staff. I think we have Ms. Melissa Johnson in back. I didn't see who else. Ms. Melissa. And Jamie's back there. There are welcomingers from the Office of Legislative Services. And we have Michelle, Leslie, Karen, Trey here at the far table that are from Office of Legislative Services. And then we have Sherelle, McCarlo. Sherelle's from Office of Legislative Services. McCarlo's from the Office of the Speaker. And McCarlo is helping the Budget and Finance Committee and the Speaker work together so we can develop bigger concepts that are going to be carried to the council. We have Mr. Rodney Tahi to the far right. He's Rodney Tahi in the gray shirt. He's our advisor to the Budget and Finance Committee. And he helps the whole committee stay on task and make sure that we follow up on some issues. If there are inadequacies in the budget, we can offer legislative concerns. What the members of the committee have done in the past through the public hearings is ask us, we're talking to know legislative concerns, we consider that the budget comes forward. And you mentioned the members of the committee, Delegate Yasi, Delegate Embigay, myself, and Chairman Amber Kness Bakrati. I think we're also going to be joined by Delegate Sherilyn Yasi. Delegate Sherilyn Yasi is the newest member of the committee. So again, that's a little bit about who's here with us in the room and where we're going to go on the agenda. So we will have lunch today provided. The Budget and Finance Committee is sponsoring lunch this afternoon. And Viti Chidi is the vendor. They're going to be here at about twelve o'clock or twelve thirty. So sit tight and enjoy some lunch a little bit later. If it's too warm in here, let us know and then they'll adjust the fanning stuff. So that that circulation continues. Again, if you want to fill out a pink sheet, the staff will hand it to me and I'll go through that. And the first round of public testimony will be for five minutes. Once we get everyone's first round, the second round will be unlimited. You won't have a time. And we'll work through that second round because I know that you get very passionate about the things that we need and the expectations of the government. So we'll provide a second round at that time. All right. So now that we've got over some of the housekeeping items, we'll go through our presentation. Mr. Tahi is the Office of Management and Budget on the call. All right, the Office of Management and Budget is not on the call. So with that, I can read that first presentation. The first presentation is going to be on your green paper. The green paper is going to be for the presentation labeled presentation by Office of Management and Budget on how the comprehensive budget is prepared and completed. On this green sheet, you'll see a chart that is listed one all the way to eighteen with a listing of dates. And on the backside, you'll see a flow chart with dimensions and arrows. We'll start on the chart with the numbers. This chart is labeled the Navajo Nation Fiscal Year FY two thousand twenty-six Budget Preparation Calendar. And this lists out everything that needs to take. Be completed. As you can see, you're currently on item thirteen, sorry, no, item nine. From June fourth to the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Budget and Finance Committee will hold public hearings in all five agencies. We've made the accommodation to come to Utah, so that we could go to all three states, Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. To make sure that we get everyone's voices and provide those spaces for us to give public comments. So going back to the number one, it says April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. The key activity that happened that day is approving the budget development legislation, including the revenue projections, budget planning allocations, budget calendar, and the budget instruction manual. That was approved by the Budget and Finance Committee on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. That legislation, that resolution that was approved by the committee is BMAD one-two-five, twenty-one twenty-five. In this resolution, the committee approved the planning base amount. That's your blue sheet. We'll go over that on the third presentation. But the committee approved this blue sheet. We also approved the calendar that we see before you. And we also approved the budget instruction manuals. Many of the chapters, programs, departments, they all work with the budget instruction manual. That key item took place on the twenty-fourth. And I keep on saying that a big deal of why it took place in April is because it's usually late. The controller comes out with his projections on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five per twelve NC. And. And the Budget and Finance Committee then has thirty days after that to approve all of these items. So this year, we're able to accomplish that. Um now we are currently on item number nine. Everything between number two and number eight are currently happening in the government. Um and I don't personally care updates on where they are. I don't think it's updates. If the uh Speaker, the President, or the Chief Justice want to work with the committee, they notify us if they have any questions about the kind of base amounts or any other portions of the legislation we approved. Um the only one that has reached out to uh me for any questions from the judicial branch, but it was minor. Otherwise, they continue to push their legislation through. The first process is from having turned to the back of the sheet where the um where the arrows are. It's a Start at Budget and Finance Committee that happens in April. Once we pass all of those items, then it goes to the programs and divisions. Right now, where you would follow the little arrows is from the programs and the branches to the branch chiefs. Down to O B compliance review, and then it goes to the prepared prepared budgets for O S C and B F C reviews. That's currently where the budget is. It next goes to the Oversight Committee. That's when it goes to the Oversight Committee, for instance, uh budgets in the Navajo Department of Health, the um Division of Family and uh Children's Services, which is our former uh Division of Social Services. Those budgets can go to Health Education Human Services. The Veterans Budget goes to Health Education Human Services. Um the the standard of budget goes to Health and Human Services Committee. And once that gets approved at that level, it then goes to one more review back to Budget Finance. The budgets in the Division of Natural Resources, the budget in the Division of Economic Development, the budget in the chapters. Those all go then to Resource and Development Committee. It goes to Resource and Development Committee when they approve the budget at that committee and then comes back to Budget Finance. Uh another set of budgets, the Law Order Committee, they approve budgets for the judicial branch, for the public safety, uh for ethics and pools. And then it comes to Budget and Finance. The Avician State Committee, they approve the budget for the Office of the President, Vice President. They approve the budget for the Office of Legislative Services. They approve the the budget for opposite appeal uh hearings and appeals. They approved a budget for several items, and then it goes back to the Budget and Finance Committee. Um so all of the recommendations from the other committees, they end up coming back to Budget and Finance. Once the recommendations come to Budget and Finance, you might ask, what, where is all this public comment? When is it gonna be heard? Before Resource and Development Committee, before H C, before L O C, before Navajo Kids, it comes back to Budget and Finance. We're going to look at all the data we collected. We're gonna look at all of your pink sheets and review it one more time. We're gonna look at the questionnaires in the back. I don't have a questionnaire in front of me, but I think it's a brown sheet. The staffer is gonna take your questionnaires, all the information you fill out today. We're gonna review it before we sit down with Chair Biggs, Chair James, Chair Charles Nigman, Chair Curly. They all come before the Budget and Finance Committee, and we're gonna look at that data together and say, this is what we collected from the public hearings. So you guys, the council delegates, they can make their recommendations. But at the end of the day, the Budget and Finance Committee is gonna say, this is what we got from the public hearings. Why do your budgets not match? Or good job, your budgets do match. We're gonna pass it forward to the council. So it's a process where we maybe go back and forth in the legislative branch to have discussions on these these uh budgets. But that's why your public comment is very important. Your public comment is gonna come into play on number thirteen. So on the calendar here, number thirteen is where your public comments are gonna come back into play. Once we have that final finalization of the small budgets, smaller budget legislations, and then it comes on the gigantic legislation called the Comprehensive Budget. That budget will be drafted at the end of August and then come before the the council um towards the middle part of August. So we hope to have this done in August. Usually, the budget is kind of um it it's it's a little last minute. So the budget in the past has been approved in September, which which has a lot of the pull on edge. It's not really good practice. So starting earlier, we hope to push through that. All right, that's the presentation on item number eight. Does anyone have any questions on the chart or on the flow chart in the back on the process? Okay, Karen, now does Controller make it on the call?
No, Madam Karen, I've been texting him.
All right, I'll wait for the controller to get online. But if no one has any questions on that first part, I want to turn your attention to the white paper with the staple. The white paper with the staple, this has the Navajo Nation revenues, projections for the revenues of the Navajo Nation. So here's where we're gonna give it to you black and white, how much the Navajo Nation has received or will receive for revenues for this fiscal year. All right, so the first part of the um the first, I guess, set of the papers where the staple I want to turn your attention to is the presentation with the seal on it. The presentation, wait, hold on, presentation, oh, that's on expenditure. Um I'm gonna turn your attention to the one that memorandum. The one that says March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and it has the um the letterhead on it, and it says that it's from Sean and Kate uh Controller to President Icarne, to Speaker Curly, to Chief Justice Juangine, um into the Budget and Finance Committee. Here, you can read a little bit closer, but the Controller is projecting the total revenues to be two hundred and eighty-five million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um I know it says two eight five comma five four nine, but you add three zeros behind that, so that's in the millions. So the Controller is projecting that the Navajo Nation this year will receive two hundred and eighty-five million. Give or take. All right, let's go to the back where the breakdown of the of the um of the revenues come in. It's labeled Exhibit A. The Navajo Nation Initial General Fund Revenue FY twenty-six Budget. You can see that the Controller has um provided a five-year look back. The the column that's for this year is in bold. It's labeled year-end nine thirty-two six. That column that's in bold, those are all the projected revenues for this budget. However, if you want to take a look back at two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, all that information is there. All that information, again, add um that that's a look back of how much we've received as a Navajo Nation. So you'll see it, oil and gas, the Controller is projecting that um we're gonna receive twenty-six million dollars in toll, thirty-five million dollars, taxes, sixty-five million dollars, investment income, seven-seven million dollars, land rentals, breakaway, business side leases, eighty-one million dollars, court fines and fees, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, other miscellaneous revenues, eight hundred thousand dollars. The the typically what's in the miscellaneous revenue are, for instance, um when you go fishing and you get a permit or go hunting and you get a permit or go to the park um and you go and and the tours they pay for their other park entry portion of that goes to um of course, Navajo Nation Park Services, but another portion goes back to vacation. Any other revenues that are not out are only defined, that's in that category. So the Controller, then, he takes a look at those projections and then he looks at the total gross revenue of the year occurring. So that's where the Controller comes out with that total revenue of two hundred and eighty-five million dollars. All right, that's great. You have two hundred and eighty-five million dollars in our pocket. What are we gonna do with it? Well, like everyone else, the Navajo Nation has to pay their bills first. So the first set of bills underneath the two hundred and eighty-five million, it's called the total revenues. So then, or sorry, underneath the total revenues, you'll see all the bills the Navajo Nation has to pay. Before we even talk about the chapter budgets, before we even talk about um the the Navajo Nation, there we have to pay some bills. The first one, the first bill we have to pay is the twelve percent set aside. So right off the top, out of that two hundred and eighty-five million, we have to subtract thirty-four million dollars. And then the next step, we have to set aside the plan acquisition trust fund. We then have to subtract five million dollars. The higher education fund, the reason why it's blank right there is because that legislation expired. But like we know, he goes to the blue sheet. The the committee has decided to set aside twelve million dollars for that section. So if you do a look back at that higher education fund, they'll still be set aside twelve point four million, twelve point four million, twelve point four million, all the way back to two thousand twenty-one. Another, the next item that we have to pay for is the capital outlay match funding. That's two million dollars. We also have to pay for the water regulations fund. That's two million dollars. And then we have to set aside four percent for the veterans' trust fund for eleven million dollars. The last item that we have to do a set aside for is the remediation fund with five million dollars. All right, all of those bills, they equal sixty-one million dollars. So if you take a look at what that leaves us with, that's gonna leave us with two hundred and twenty-four billion dollars. So out of that two hundred and twenty-four million dollars, we can then talk about how much the chapters get, how much the executive branch gets, how much the judicial branch gets, and how much the legislative branch gets. So that's the breakdown of the revenues that we set aside. The second part of the Controller's report that he's he would have gone over this morning is how much we have spent in the last five years. That's the second white paper with the um with the staple on there. The Controller, the Budget and Finance Committee asked the Controller, how much does the Navajo Nation actually spend? Because we have two hundred and twenty million dollars. Do we actually spend all our money? Um well, the Controller said, that's a great question for you to ask. So he developed a report. The report I'm gonna turn your attention to is called Navajo Nation Office of the Controller's two thousand twenty-four Budget Analysis on Budget Level Detail Four. It's the one with the three squares uh or the three rectangles and the shaded one on the bottom. So here you can see the two thousand twenty-four budget. How much the executive branch got, how much the judicial branch and the legislative got after the bills were paid. So the total, the executive branch received in the last year's FY twenty-four budget was two hundred and seventy-four million dollars. That's in the bold. That's how much they're selling. Operating, the direct assistance, the capital outlay, the matching, that total two hundred and seventy-seven million. All right, we turn to the to the next number to the right, where it says expenses and encumbrances. The total amount of expensive encumbrances that they um and they occurred in the FY twenty-four budget was two hundred and fifteen million. Okay, so that leaves there with the budget available of sixty million dollars to sixty million dollars was money spent in FY twenty-four. They only spent seventy-eight percent of their budget. So everyone's asking, give me more money, give me more money for services. But it's really a question to the management on how they spend their dollars. The council thinks definitely give them the money, but it's a matter of spending that in dollars. All right, let's take a look at the judicial branch. The judicial branch asked for nineteen million dollars. They got nineteen million dollars. You look at how much they spent. They spent fourteen million dollars. How much did they have left? They did not spend five million dollars. That's a expenditure rate of seventy-two point one eight percent. You you look at the legislative branch, our legislative branch in FY twenty-four, they asked for twenty-three million dollars. They spent nineteen million dollars, and they have still four million dollars left. They got the highest expenditure rate, though. They did spend eighty point eight seven percent of their budget pretty good. But if you look at the whole Navajo Nation, the whole Navajo Nation budget for FY twenty-four was three hundred and eighty million dollars. The Navajo Nation government only spent two hundred and forty-eight point dollars. And that meant that the Navajo Nation government did not spend seventy million dollars in FY twenty-four. That's a seventy-seven point nine expenditure rate. So we're sharing this with you to show you that there's no reason to to fight over money when a lot of money doesn't get spent anyways. Um you you can continue to read the report. You also have FY twenty-five budget, which is this current budget. This one is on a six-month budget. So the last FY twenty-four budget, you can see that's a twelve-month budget. It's already posted out. But you can see where the current FY twenty-five budget is as of March thirty-first, twenty-five. And another budget in Finance Committee has received um and it's pushing the Controller to ensure that the chapter budget's getting paid. Because once the chapter budget, we have the FY twenty-five budget, the executive branch budget should so that the total number of encumbrances for uh direct services and assistance can be captured. Um so that's a snapshot of how you see schools before you on revenues and and the expenditure rates for the Navajo Nation. Anyone have any questions? Yeah, go ahead. Can you use the microphone?
Thank you. Uh my question is, what happens to unspent dollars?
The unspent dollars in, that's a great question. The question was, what happens to unspent dollars? For the record, it was by um our chapter president from Navajo Mountain, Mr. Willie Gray. The the answer is that seventy million dollars goes back into the U U F B, the Undesignated Fund Balance. So the the Navajo Nation in um two thousand twenty-two, in two thousand twenty-two, the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, they passed a legislation where there's no carryover for the budget. So when there's funds spent dollars, money does not stay in winter off anymore. It goes off to the Undesignated Fund Balance to the, and then your next question is probably, how much is in the U U F B right now? The U U F B is more than two hundred and fifty million dollars right now. Yes, and the reason why is um we're taking a look what the Budget and Finance Committee is doing in the FY twenty-five budget is we actually amended our budget and only utilized the U U F B for the FY twenty-five budget. What that means is we're no longer depending on projections. What a projection means is that the Controller, he he thinks next year we're gonna bring in two hundred and eighty-five million dollars. But with the U U F B, if you continue to pull money out of the U U F B, that means we're taking money out of our own pocket and paying for our own expenses instead of kind of it it's really a gamble on how much we're gonna pull in revenues. But who is it to say that the policies that are introduced um by President Trump or by Congress are gonna impact our revenues? So this committee is determined to change the way we budget so that we budget actual dollars instead of projected dollars. So the U U F B balance is growing. However, the intent is that we hope that the comprehensive budget then just comes out of the U U F B instead of out of the projections. That way we don't pretend we have money. It's like, it's it's kind of like, um let's say, for an individual, it's saying, okay, I think I'm gonna get paid um twenty dollars tomorrow. Can I? But today, can I buy this? And tomorrow, you might not get paid twenty dollars. You might get paid ten dollars. So we're we're making the new U F B um fairly large so that the comprehensive budget can come out of the money that we already have. So it's called Budget Actually, Zero Balance Budget Method.
Uh yeah, Benashia, Karen, I was saying she is for the initiative at the time, she is the time she is she I don't care, I only that she trade your twenty-three, that she numbers. Out of a uh share uh with the object to uh housing committee uh member. Uh not a dash three, yeah, no, we four years and uh I think that year twenty thirteen and done. Yeah, all object of chapter, it's on the mall, yeah. According to this day, we find out that we do not, we do not have a land for our perspective on object to our chapter.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, so I was asking for questions on the presentation. On how the dollars were broken down, the revenues and calculations. But if you wanna offer your public comments, so that's, that is recorded for the record, fill out a pink sheet. And then give that over to uh the staff here, Miss Karen can take your pink sheet. And the reason why it's so important to document this is because when you, these pink sheets are gonna be uploaded to the legislation itself. So um you'll see a copy of your comments and then it'll be attached to that legislation. Um, we're kind of talking about the questions posed, I know we'll get into a little bit more about the capital. Uh projects because the C I P, the I C I P for the chapters. Is a discussion we do have with the comprehensive budget. So for instance, on Friday, uh the committee was out into the city. And we had to an estimate, a local governance do a presentation on. Uh a, a large sports complex, it was on their I C I P. So I don't know, um if old Jato's I C I P list is updated, we're gonna look that up. And take a look on where that discussion can happen because if it's on the I C I P, the certified chapters do have. Uh the ability to have that direct discussion on the comprehensive budget again. These dollars are only for twelve months, so if you don't even have a length withdrawal. That has to happen first before we have a conversation about where the money is coming from. Um, I did see a President Nigren's memorandum, but in President Nigren's memorandum on his budget message. It doesn't specify how his staff is gonna help old Jato's chapter with that. Because the president has stated that direct services come out of the office of the president, vice president. And I don't know if any of his staff members are helping old Jato's chapter get the necessary support that they need. I don't know that, so um that is my question regarding the. You're asking for money to get you some, some money for surveys, but then it comes down to personnel, how. Who is, who is the lead on that project and how are you gonna complete that project in twelve months? So there's other avenues of funding, the I C I P is a six year plan. It's not an upfront, here's ten million dollars, it's over time, how are you gonna face this project then? So I, I, I know we'll get into that discussion. Okay, uh Chair recognized for cutting people to size, so it's, it looks like you're asking for fifteen thousand dollars for each chapter house. So if, if um, no fifteen thousand dollars for your. Year one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So year one means like planning, planning dollars essentially. So uh if you wanna continue having that conversation, then we'll look forward to that. I think you should mark for raising that. Anyone else have any questions on the, the breakdown of the dollars? Alright, hearing enough questions at this time, the last presentation that the committee wanted to share with you. Is the blue sheet. The blue sheet is. What we approved in the F A P twenty one twenty five in April. So we kind of did an overall view of how much money is coming in, bills we have to pay. And now we're gonna get into that twenty two million dollars still left on the table. Um, or is it twenty million dollars? It was, yeah, twenty two, twenty two million dollars. Uh, two hundred and twenty, sorry, two hundred and twenty million dollars. The budget and finance committee then, uh every year, this part of the planning base mount can have a figure fixed cost. Fixed cost allocations are totaling thirty three million dollars. Fixed cost allocations include eastern land, uh for rental of the building. Now, when Utah Commission does get a portion of the fixed costs, the Black Peter Review Board, they get a fixed cost. The Navajo Generating Station Transmission Line to keep that um still a viable project, that's a fixed cost. Um, we also added the Navajo Washington Office Rental as fixed cost. So a lot of the rental items that the nation pays for, that's primarily what's in its costs. That'll, that totals out to thirty three million dollars. The next item is external funds cash match for eight million dollars. When we partner with federal programs like Head Start. The Head Start may require the Navajo Nation to keep our own general funds in our pocket. So that we can do a cash match for that program. So even though we're receiving federal dollars for Head Start, we do a partnership where the Navajo Nation also pays into that program too. And a branch, as you can, if you wanna take a look back at this second presentation that we went over. That when we broke out the executive, the judicial and the legislative branch, you can see in the FY twenty five budget. We gave the executive branch twenty five, twenty, or two hundred and fifty seven million dollars. This year, uh we're giving the executive branch one hundred and two million dollars. Reason why we're giving the executive branch one hundred and two million dollars is because of how much they spent the previous year. This is gonna increase because when we go through with the oversight, there's, there's gonna be unmet needs. Unmet needs will, will always be increasing dollars, but this is just a planning based mount primarily for salaries. And a little bit of uh management. Us. The next item is the legislative branch, that's sixteen million dollars, the judicial branch is for fourteen million dollars. Chapter non administrative for team nine dollars. The police department missing murdered indigenous persons unit victim advocate dollars. The FY twenty six summary complement dollars, the home, Navajo Home Ownership Support Dollars, audits. The veterans, the Navajo Epidemiology Center, the Navajo Higher Education Fund, the judicial bridge. Those items, that was all added by the budget and finance committee this year. And the reason why is because the committee, and we allocated dollars to the executive branch, legislative branch and judicial branch for these purposes. Sometimes the branch chiefs and the managers, they can move the money around so they don't get fully used for the, for the intended purpose. You specifically saw that with the missing murdered indigenous peoples unit. Last year, we allocated. Two million dollars, two, three million dollars for the police department. To develop the missing murdered indigenous peoples unit, three million dollars. But I don't know if anyone here has ever seen a police unit for that community. So we said, okay, police department, you can't move money around anymore, we're gonna put this at the front, so you do have to develop. A, a police department missing, missing murdered indigenous peoples unit and dollars for victim advocates. Um, the second item is ensure that FY twenty six summary youth employment. It'd be a part of the budget for one million dollars, that would be distributed by a fifty fifty formula. The Navajo Home Ownership Support is for fifteen million dollars, that is a um. Project led by Vice Chair Carl Slater. It's an opportunity for the Navajo Nation to work with banks. So that banks can offer lower percentages on mortgages and offer homeownership opportunities. Uh whether it's for mortgages or uh building suppliers, uh Vice Chair Carl Slater is adamant to work with several entities. So that we can leverage funds for individual people who would like to um. Work with the Navajo government on developing their own funds. The audits were two hundred thousand dollars. Those dollars are to assist the Office of the Auditor General to do additional audits for the Navajo people. And then, and then primarily the chapters. Because the chapters, sometimes if they're in a corrective action plan, they're asked to do. Um several audits over a period of time and it's costly to the nation, it's costly to the chapter. So we're asking for a cost share partnership in that. The veterans are gonna receive three million dollars in um additional dollars, which. If you're familiar with your chapter budget, that is the five thousand dollars that the chapters receive for veterans events. And this is not from the Veteran Trust Fund, this is from the general funds. The veterans will be allocated five thousand dollars to each of the chapters. To post events and um to help with food costs or declarations to celebrate their veterans. The next item is the Navajo Epidemiology Center Disease Surveillance Software, that is the big uh. New software the nation will be pursuing to purchase for data sovereignty. So that the Navajo Nation can own our own data collected uh within our epidemiology center. The Navajo Higher Education Fund, if you go back to the revenues and the bills that we had to pay. This year it was zero, but the committee put it back in the twelve point four million. Till new legislation is going to be um sponsored by Honorable Dr. Edina's. This Higher Education Fund is for dollars that go to Dene College and also to the Navajo Technical University. To our tripe colleges. Last item is to the judicial branch for three hundred thousand dollars for repair and maintenance and contractual services. The judicial branch is conducting their own study and they ask for additional dollars. They also ask for dollars to renovate their um court buildings uh on smaller renovations. So that is the last presentation, the presentation you see on this year, every year it changes, it's not the same. And, but for this year, FY twenty six, that blue sheet is one that the budget and finance committee is proposing. For the fixed costs and also any base amounts. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, hearing none at this time, thank you all for coming. Let's see, I do see more people showing up, so I just want to let you know where we are on the agenda. We have finished our presentations on the agenda, which is item number three, budget hearing presentation to A V M C. And um so now we'll get into the public budget, uh public key testimonies. Um, so I think, I think the Office of Legislative Services for providing the brown sheet here is gonna give you an idea of where we are. I have, uh for those just joining us, if you wanna join the um queue, the line here. Uh, well, I think she. Okay, also I just wanted to mention that this um, this whiteboard here, the same information is on.
The blue sheet.
The blue page, it's the same thing. The reason why we're doing this out is so you can take it home, you can keep it. Alright, okay, so we're on item number four, public testimonies. Again, if you just uh arrive to the welcome center. Please fill out a pink sheet, if you'd like to offer comments, if you wanna do a public testimony, you can come to the. Um, we're gonna call any, love here to the podium and you're gonna be given five minutes for your first round. Or if you wanna do, and also do written comments as well, just submit it in. Decline and verbal comments, so entirely up to you. Um, but we do wanna collect everyone's public testimony today so that we can use it um in the comprehensive budget, believe me. I, I have worked with the budget and finance committee for the past two years, almost three years, and. Working with them on, on the budget, um I've been the sponsor over the past two, three budgets now. And it really takes this whole team here, the whole budget and finance committee to ask these questions. And the more information you give us from the public, the better the questions can get and get your, your questions answered from our colleagues. So the, uh again, fill out a pink sheet, give it to Miss Karen over here. And Trey in the hat, he's gonna be our timekeeper this morning. Okay, Cheryl. Trey has had a nap. Alright, Cheryl's gonna be the timekeeper, Cheryl, can you hold up your time cards? Alright, Cheryl's gonna let you know if you have two minutes or one minute left. Again, the first round is for five minutes and we're just being respectful of everyone's time. I don't know if other people have afternoon appointments or other engagements. Uh I know like Mr. Willie here, he came always from Navajo Mountain and I do see um. Our chapter president from Mexican water here too. Uh so I do appreciate, I remember my colleagues on the Navajo Utah Commission for being here, we also see Miss Hall here. Um and they're from, um, and they're from. I was trying to remember the, uh the next minute, we do appreciate them for, for being here. Alright, okay, so we're gonna go one by one of the public comments, the first round is only for five minutes. And the second round is going to be for unlimited time. I, I can see our vice president, Kate, and take your two, chapter manager, Chichi, so our chapter, our, our. So thank you all for being here. Alright, let's start with Mr. Willie Gray.
Thank you, uh Shima. Members of the uh S A M. I would come before you. I would like to uh address my statement in terms of where I am located on my chapter. It's one of the most isolated, remote communities of the Navajo Nation. Situated. In this direction. And we're entailed by natural boundaries. Deep canyon, so very, very uh rough country. I do, so in that sense, uh. We are prepared to present a uh. A piece of reason, as you will, reason paper. And I'd like to express that in terms of what are unmet needs are. Would I just go through it? You have a copy of the foreword. That's a bunch of the finance committee. And I'd like to secondly, uh also introduce a concept of. Not appropriation, but allocation. Special funding allocated to the chapter. Sometimes you experience a reserve or savings. And that's what the formula suggests, right, that using the fifty fifty cap. Anyway, uh, I'd like to just go through the unmet needs. Under B, there's Navajo Chapter House renovation project. Eight hundred seventy five thousand dollars. B is uh bathroom and kitchen renovation, four hundred, one hundred twenty five thousand. Now sign, earth and dam repair project, which is one million five hundred. Next one is Navajo Senior Citizen Center. Five thousand, finally nine hundred twenty seven thousand. Next is the Navajo Mountain to Ocheto. Row, proposed row. It says, not the sound, Navajo Mountain Translation EIS. Row between here, Manbevale, Ocheto, Navajo Mountain. EIS cost would be four million dollars. Now the sound, high U Mesa Power Line Extension, five million four hundred thousand. Now the sound, High Mesa Waterline Project, which is thirty million five hundred dollars. These thirty millions are from the engineer firm that is working on the design plan at this time. It was awarded to Navajo over uh out of Tucson. Now, on High Mesa Row, which is in sixty three ten. Uh, which means a very high maintenance. This lottery room should be uh experienced. Uh, sometimes blocked by boulders. The rooms are blocked by boulders, uh, always set to China. Being the remote isolated area. Nobody wants to come out on a given notice and take care of business. So it takes about four, maybe two months in order to adjust some of these conditions. In total, fifty four million one hundred we are we have identified in terms of unmet needs, so we'd like to uh offer that to you for your consideration. Um, the other base, uh, they changed or Navajo Nation final allocation on
Uh, she asked, the five minutes has expired, but you can come back for the second round and then we'll, we'll. But the committee has questions for you, so I'm gonna give some time to committee, then we can continue this conversation. So now Chair Amber Kness, MacCarty, have some questions?
Would we have more time? We want to make sure everybody gets their public comments. Uh, I would like to have a conversation regarding the allocation formula. I'll save that chair and committee members after the formal five minutes. But uh, send to the resolution and I appreciate the resolution. It's not signed yet, so what I'm gonna ask is the Department of Community Development provided an update on the chapters, projects that you have in your ICIP, the wind. On the Navajo Nation Wind System, so there's a difference what they're, what they're suggesting. So your number one project for fiscal year twenty twenty six is a chapter house renovation project. And you're asking for two people. On fiscal year twenty twenty six, you're asking for nine hundred fifty thousand. So there is a slight difference. I just asked at this time, since this is draft, there could be some reconciliation. Either update uh this new amount into when or you can confirm that you're okay moving forward with the nine hundred fifty. Yeah, nine hundred um fifty, because it sounds like this, you have secured nine hundred thousand. I just wanna make sure that's correct. Um, your second project is actually scattered power lines, so that's different. Hold on. Answer that question, if you could answer that question.
If you had, Shannon, we're, if we fall back to the uh, our president.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, for your questions. The uh as you can see, the resolution has not been voted on. It's a draft. We will be considering the final resolution um, on the twenty first of this month. Before that, on the fourteen, which is next Saturday, we'll have uh Western Navajo Agency Council supporting resolution, so that's what I am anticipating. Yes, you're right, we, we get to uh co- coordinate, collaborate on those uh, status, thank you.
If you had, and then uh we'll give them, we're, we're talking about the Western Agency Council meeting. I think the members of the Budget and Finance Committee are interested in attending Western Agency Council meeting. Um, so again, for the committee members, it's this Saturday, Chief Chastor, that's where the Western Agency Council. Um, so we'll go back to uh, Sharon, Amber, and MacCarty, I think uh, she responded to the questions.
Uh, thank you, Sharon, and so our, or Shannon, I apologize today. Uh, it sounds like we don't have personnel right now to help change this. So we could give recommendations that ASC provide some technical assistance so that you can modify your ASC. Um, it's all right now in a draft form. Um, because the Navajo Nation Appropriation Laws Act does require a five-year ICIP plan. So it's okay, we're, we're all in the planet's interest. This is why we're having a public hearing. But um, so if you wanna change, if you wanna change um your top three projects, that's at the discussion of chapter. But I would just like it is, this is what the community is voting on, if they could just near however the community wants something forward and just update your ICIP plan. I don't think there's uh, base to see staff that should be able to help your chapter officials or um where they themselves can help you with that. And we'll make sure that uh, Mr. Black here, uh, she actually gives aware, so he could also help and uh, help the chapters. All of us are in the same boat. It's another New Mexico side. Uh, because New Mexico State also requires the year of the ICIP. We're seeing that their, their ICIP are more current, so just wanted to make sure, give you enough notice. And that is the rule to approve a five-year plan. Um, and we would just like to have your most updated information. Thank you, no other question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and Robert, uh, Mr. Willie here, he needs some help updating his uh wind system. He's walked out, he thinks I can't see him. Mr. Robert Black, I can still see you. I'm gonna tell delegate Daniel. Okay, the announcement though is that the, in the wind system, your chapter managers and your CSCs can help with that, is updating your, your uh, projects with wind system, the CIP. I know uh, last year, uh, that was a big push on updating that, because we have in-chapter leadership. I know that that's gonna be updated again on the prioritization of that. The committee, the Budget and Finance Committee does have access to the CIP. And what we take a look at is how much each year the chapters are asking for allocations. And Chair Amber Kness MacCarty is gonna sponsor that legislation for the year one uh allocations, and I'm gonna co-sponsor for that legislation. So we're taking a look at that year one CIP, because we're tired of waiting for the recommendations from um, other committees, is that we have to get these, these projects going and, and the funds available. So we're, we're working too with um the CIP, make sure that's, that's available. Uh, I also want to make an announcement that if um, anyone has chapter resolutions, letters, written documents, anything, please submit that to our staff here. They can make a copy of it and then give it to the committee members. But um, she has, Mr. Um, Mr. Gray Eyes, do you have any other comments or questions?
Now at this time, I guess uh, well, I have to uh, go back and um pay to remove it somehow.
Sure, I believe the staff gave you Exhibit E. That Exhibit E, if every, if you have a, like Mr. Mr. Gray Eyes here is telling us he has a total dollar amount. If the chapter has a business unit, you can put the business unit on that Exhibit E form and then fill out your expenditure costs and then the, what you're gonna use it for. Then members of the committee can amend the budget and we just pull that Exhibit E and attach it as amendment to the budget. That, that, that's what the Exhibit E actually does. It's a real, it's an amendment to the legislation.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, thank you. We'll come back uh, team for round two, if we still wanna continue. Mister, Mister Gray Eyes, he had his draft resolution, he had an allocation formula. Alright, next we have Robert Black, come on, Jeff. Robert Black, going twice. Let's hear it, because they're black, it's yours.
Good morning, Gata. Not if I am Chair Parrish. Uh, all of the people that are here, Scott. Um, before I hit it all, I love that. I appreciate the time that um, Budget and Finance Committee allocates each year, because this is the thing, the third one I'm, I'm gonna be attending. And then giving you a lot of, yes, um, it's clarity in the Navajo, Navajo money that we're looking at each year. And the huge man that, that we had when I said to you, so first of all, there's all that, if you say the intended can install for achievement, it's just to I don't, the achievement, you should see that, I know. I don't, um, Shantel, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. Um, I guess, in this, third and two row, I guess. If I mean, I bet, I'm allowed it. Um, recently, um, community member for Shanto and then also a um who have um, assisted for delegate angles and, and here from all the four chapters that we go, see, so even not eight, um, I felt that, that I may actually, at least put um, um, some comments in for, for the areas that I mean. Let's get down to, well, I guess, uh, the degree of the, uh, the area that, that I think that we should be addressing. Uh, in my opinion, is the public safety needs. Um, hey, I get it, I appreciate it, I hope you, but right now, um Shanta, Tapi, Ken, Kaito, and Navajo Mountain, all talk about substitution. Being having place that each other community has uh, the amount of um, um long-term commitment that's um needed for our region. So I think um, we uh have our share of um, a lot of the instances that you've been describing in terms of our public safety. And I think um, if we can um vouch for or advocate for our, our needs in the area, especially in terms of having offices available. I don't know, I'm gonna say uh uh, we, projects, um, we have a bunch of money that we identify for expenditures. And, and it's working with um, the departments in Winter Rock and then also with the chapter. And I'm pretty sure you got all of this to that, uh, on the, what do we do next and also like a lot of the, uh, the preliminary work is being done to uh, paper various projects for um to be ready to be constructed, you get, you get, I think, we need to really have um um, I don't know what we can say, but um maybe some additional technical assistance for each chapter in terms of um, whether it be project managers or um, somebody that can be supervising the overall construction process and stuff like that. But there's not, there's the money, you know, that, that we start, yeah, thank you, so non-trust case, because of um right now, eh, we know the CPMD and all of the partners that work with um, building these buildings are, are pretty much um, um, I guess they have a full load. And I think uh, there's a way that we can uh, refocus some of the funding to hire these people to work with the chapter, because um right now, for all JTO's, for instance, they, you have a chapter building, you have a senior citizen center. I don't know, they have um, the needs of the area for, we're, we're looking at public facilities. And also roads and I don't know, foot, foot, uh, chief, I should have thought probably ever changed that, in terms of having fresh water available, so when that ended, and she, they require a lot of people to be um, in place where, um, at least people that knew all this stuff, you caught that job, but keep, will need the loan. I don't know, the tourism revenue, uh, we had one sixty-three here, one sixty thousand now. And then ninety going through our region. And I would venture to say is probably as much as um, four ninety-one almost, because of the amount of traffic that we get during this time of year. And I think there's a way that we can look into um, um generating more revenue from this process because of uh, for you, or, or tourist to each, but there's something that we need to have in place so that, that, that we can have a little bit more, um, I guess enjoyable experience where our people are traveling to it. But I think we can redirect money from uh, the tourism industry to um, to fill um, a lot of the needs that we have for chapters that are along these routes. Um, they follow the corners to the city, Cameron, and then from uh to the chief, to Shanto, and then all the way up to here, to Mexican, or Mexican head. So you know, I think we need to really look at uh, how we can generate additional revenue itself. I know in terms of um, economic development, I think um, I, we need to re- revisit the uh, business land leasing provisions on how the rental fees or lease fees are orchestrated, because I think we're pretty much ripping ourselves out in terms of how much Navajo Nations. Um, we know uh, our situation in the Shanto, um, I think that's basically where we're at now. And then the base on the former process that, that, or the process that we have, that they authority to have this. The, the process that we usually use, um, or, 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 I guess, I don't know if we're subject to it, but uh, we like to uh um, be able to negotiate what the market values, based on what we, basically, so we had a sixty million dollar building, it was done in a, a base that was done to use the business land lease application, but this was placed at five thousand dollars. Like, heck, so I think that needs to be revisited with RBC. Um, I think um, this um, one of our attorneys, D O J, was questioning why, why we haven't done this, or revisited this, and they said that, well, um, we just haven't had time to do it, it's very responsible, so anyway, it is, my time, man.
Yeah, Shay, uh, Shay, Robert Black. Uh, I just want to make a comment on uh the, the points that Mr. Black is raising. I know that this is true in all of Western Agency regarding any kind of economic development. One of the, the biggest challenges that I saw in the FY twenty-five budget was that Mr. Suelanas in the Division of Economic Development Budget, he took out Western Agency, RBDO. He cut the budgets for Western Agency. So if we're not watching these division directors closely and we're asking as the people, this is something we should prioritize. If President Nigrid is saying that we should prioritize tourism, then why If President Nigrid is saying that we should prioritize tourism, then why is a division director from Economic Development cutting these positions from Western Agency? I share that with you because if you have chapter resolutions that are asking for these positions in the budget, then please submit it to us. If you have letters, if you have priorities in your communities, or if you're just an individual here with no title. You're 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 welcome here too. We want to hear directly from the public. And again, if you write that here on this pink sheet of paper and say, I want to make sure that. That and the Division of Economic Development Budget that we prioritize tourism. And I have no choice, the committee has no choice but to say, this is what the people want. This is where we should put the money instead of in in this part or this part, but if that's a true priority of the of the community here. Then and we really do appreciate your comments, but we'll come back around to you, okay, to check. We'll go to uh. Person number three, Miss Clarice Begay, she's our new chapter manager from Kiinta. So again, five minutes for the first round and then second round is unlimited. I think we're setting up for lunch really shortly, so. We'll make that announcement once that comes in, thank you. Of course, yours, Miss Begay.
Uh good morning, everyone. Uh let me quickly introduce myself. My name is Clarice Begay. And I do have my chapter, uh chapter vice president Stanley Quizzo, then I also have uh. Chapter Secretary Treasurer Dalton Singer here with with me as well. So first and foremost, I just wanna bring up some issues or some stuff that we will like to see in the upcoming budget. First one, of course, is at the chapter level. Uh as you all know, that we only have two full-time staff at the chapter level, which is the chapter manager slash C S C for non-certified. And then also the A um. Admin assistant for the A M S for the non-certified. So I think that it's about time that we need to open that to three positions at the chapter level. In our case, uh we're looking to possibly um get a full-time maintenance person on site. Um mainly because the majority of the chapters, they use their P P funds to hire either office aide or uh the maintenance person. So a lot of times we go through these people that come to the chapter. And you know, we get a good person that comes on board, but then because of the policy and how P P is structured, we have to let them go. So that's why I think it's best to get uh an additional full-time staff where we can provide benefits for them. Um A D gave the other one is to increase funding for summer use currently right now. Uh we only have about twenty thousand that we're running off right now, that we hired only five students um this year. And then another five for next month. So looking at the budget right here, there's a base allocation amount for one million dollars. So if you use that fifty fifty formula, that only ends up to like about five thousand per chapter. Which is what we're getting for this coming fiscal year that we haven't even get yet. So I think we finally got the money as of today. So if you look at five thousand, if you look at all the taxes and everything. Five thousand at the chapter, you're only gonna hire at least maybe two college students for the month, for one month, or even four high school students. So that's where we will like to see an increase in summer use. The other one that I would like to see an increase is the burial assistance. That would be probably under social services. Uh I know the Na'vi Nation assists families for burial assistance at twenty-five hundred. And right now, uh we do still see families coming to the chapter requesting for additional assistance. And each chapter is set up differently depending on how much money they have to allocate. Um so right now, we're I'm seeing an average of about six thousand uh for burial assistance. The other one that I kinda wanna bring up also. Is the fifty fifty formula. Is that something that Na'vi Nation wishes to continue to utilize it? So that's some, is there another recommendation out there that can utilize to get these chapters their allocation amounts? The other one I kinda wanna bring up also is the Budget Instruction Manual. Um I know there was issues, um like I I came aboard uh right before there were, I guess, revisions to be made. If you look on the appendix in one. Section G, it says L G A certified chapters can directly. Obtain funds to the controller. That is not happening right now. We have to go through A S C and that's causing hindrance. For us, so if I could get support from. Uh Budget Finance, we could start utilizing section G so we can get these funds to our chapter. The other one also I want to bring to your attention is Division of Community Development A S C Office. They're supposed to be there to provide technical assistance. And from the short time I've been here, I haven't seen that yet. Uh there's a lot of issues I would like to bring up, but in the short time, I'd like to bring up there the next time. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Miss Begay, I really appreciate your service in Kiinta. Uh and I know our chapter vice president and our chapter secretary treasurer and uh our chapter president there are appreciative of the work that you do. I just want to mention um. A little bit about the summer youth employment dollars. I know I mentioned earlier that that would be distributed by fifty fifty formula. Um however, if you're asking today that that not be considered. Another way that the committee, and I I again, I'm gonna honor your public comments today, if that's not. If that is not what the people want, they don't want fifty fifty formula for the summer youth employment, then another avenue. Um uh the other calculation that we've done in the past is we do up to. So an up to uh method is, for instance, in F Y twenty-five, did up to thirty-five thousand dollars in. So the Na'vi Nation Council allocated money, we started to look at all of the balances of the chapters. And then the chapters depleted their funds to, I don't know, maybe four hundred dollars in their account. Like that chapter got up to thirty-five thousand dollars, new dollars in their account. And then if let's say you have a chapter with one hundred thousand dollars in their summer youth employment, there are chapters with hundreds of dol- thousands of dollars in their accounts. They don't get any money. So we take, we've we've taken into consideration that up to nothing, saying. The chapters that utilize their funds, they should get dollars. The chapters that are not utilizing their funds, they have to spend down their dollars before they get dollars. So that's the formula that that everyone here is requesting or across the Na'vi Nation, we continue to pursue that. Um one thing that this committee has challenged me, because I'm the one that advocated for summer youth dollars in this budget. Is that they have challenged me to say, what are the chap- what are the chapters, how are they utilizing? And and how many chapters are utilizing to um workforce development? Because the Na'vi Nation. Is not spending down their workforce development dollars from the federal government. We have billions of dollars left in our workforce development. I know Chichimito does a great job at uh accessing that, but that's that's additional questions that they that they asked me. In the model, why it should be a priority for the Na'vi Nation on three tons of budget just to have those resources as well? So again, if you're familiar with the discussions we have at Budget Finance, always asking. What are the other options? Spend down those other options so we can help make sure that those services are met with general fund dollars. So just some some comments back about uh specifically somebody. Um we look forward to having a discussion about the Budget Instruction Manual. And right now, the Eastern Agency Council. They submitted a version of the Budget Instruction Manual for chapters. That is currently at the Department of Justice, but I believe I can say I'll welcome any amendments at any time in discussions about the Budget Instruction Manual. Um the whether it's for this, 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 there, I will say though, that there has to be a new Budget Instruction Manual. Uh in October, and the reason why is because the Na'vi Nation is getting a new F M I S system called the E R P. The new E R P has a different way of accessing our budgets across the Na'vi Nation. So there there will be a time that the Budget Instruction Manual is amended in about October, so. Um I know that you just started, but I welcome the discussion about improvements because I don't like red tape. I I I want to cut that red tape to make sure that you have a process that's transparent, but also we can be accountable. So I I think you've just gave your comments so far. Members of the committee, do you have any questions? Welcome. Yeah, I'm gonna channel the number of this Friday.
Uh yeah, I think you appreciate um. Appreciate the comments, uh. Many members, I hope uh that we can get government development staff. To be participating on these calls. Uh that's the only purpose. We have an office of Na'vi Nation Government Development. Um their annual budget is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so they're almost like in line with the chapter, right? And they've been in existence for twenty years. So the the Na'vi Nation Government and the people. That means, let's see, so for every four years, that's a million dollars, they've been around. So we've we invested five billion dollars into the government development office. But yet, it continues to hear challenges as a chapter level. There are another entity that can help you, first of all, especially like with fresh eyes. And coming into this conference, uh we, I think that's one of the the ways that we need to start modifying on what works best. I was, I was sharing here, there's some entry, I think we should ask, I'm grandma and grandpa. Case. What services do you need? And then build a government structure out of that. Because the chapters are supposed to provide that voice at a very local level, like micro level. So the expectation is, you know your community best, that you have community assessment. Um and then every year, come to Na'vi Nation and say, this is our need. That's why we're out here as a hearing. Uh so we're we're working on that. Uh last year was our first public hearing. And that has not been conducted in thirty years. So the nation herself, we have to look back at our loss. So you mentioned um the B I B on section G. So it does say ten, um. So I would, I would ask all certified chapters, including Kanta, pass a resolution. And have that direct communication with the Budget and Finance Committee when it comes to your budget. Uh it's my understanding that L G A certified chapters um would submit their own budgets. And I think that's committee members were open to that discussion in dialogue. But because we're a performance-based budget, we also have to anticipate questions. And follow up. Because I would wanna see Na'vi Nation programs enter into agreements with the chapter, and then you provide the services at a very local level. And we see a lot of vacant seats, especially when it comes to C H R, it comes to um. Uh senior, senior centers, and even, you know, onboarding another, you know, like a maintenance person. Uh we could have met the B I B, and you could even, I I think workforce development should be partnered with every chapter. Like you can be the small workforce development, train them, and then send them on their way and and. So. With your comments, I think I know that uh there's a lot of support from this current council. Uh but we need to get something done before the end of next year, so then we have a new council. So third year is always good, because this is probably the most active the council will be. Uh because next year, people will either be campaigning or ready to go back to the sheep camp, right? So um I appreciate that, and if we could work with Chair Parrish. From Kiinta, can really provide that guy in civil, like brew a resolution, that would be amazing. And then we suggest how government development, work with Kiinta, and what laws need to be changed, or policies need to be changed. And they could provide you that support. Appreciate it. It was just comments.
Yes, I did, thank you. Well, yeah, I think I really appreciate this Budget Finance Committee because we're looking at how to change the processes. So we're um. I I will work with, of course, I I will work with Kiinta chap, please make sure that gets done. I do appreciate it, Miss Begay. Welcome back to you for round two. Thank you. Yeah, our fourth person in queue, our chapter secretary treasurer from Kiinta, Mr. Dalton Singer.
Yeah, I think, and then I know, yeah, uh. I just, I don't chair, don't be embarrassed, I know, Budget and Finance Committee members. I don't know, here, I have a possible, can't be shady, I don't think it's a shame. As she mentioned, she only wants to see more of my neighbors, since we've got the neighbors study. I don't know, I want to mention, they, uh, she, she all, I don't, I don't, I can't stand. I don't really, um. Regarding the budget, I want to thank you. For hosting these public meetings. Uh it really does mean. A lot to the community members and chapter officials, and also seeing the budget and how. Is prepared and brought to council in the presence of this office, so. Um we've covered the majority of what um I was gonna. And. Talk about, however, uh another thing I really wanted to point out is. Uh, uh, team, uh, are you? Are you there seniors and all, I've never been to the A M D, I really want to see a lot of um. Your best, so we eat budget toward them. Uh one thing I I I noticed throughout the Na'vi Nation is we don't have. Don't want to, hardly any community centers out there. For community members, especially the youth and the elders. That one example, we we know this, in Dulce, every year, maybe I get invited out to Dulce, meet my friends and. Whereas they're hosting an event or a game, uh they they have general facilities on, they have a community center. For community, for elders and me. I shouldn't know, I must have known, they come together and. General, uh, uh. Even died in the snow, uh, not that, that. Yeah, I'm crazy. And that's something that, you know, as a as an official, that I want to see brought back to our community. Communities across the Na'vi Nation is, you know, investing. Infrastructure for community centers for, I mean, and our elders. Because. Right now, I know majority of uh. Are you, the net of naked, you know, you have that people, they just, that people, that you said that, so, you know. And I know the president just passed a, the executive order, you know, mandating that our official language is Na'vi. And one of the criteria is to have an Na'vi Nation president, to be fluent in Na'vi, yet. Uh. We need to also bring up a solution on how we can fix those issues and, you know, our our white community. Over the past couple of years, we've helped local events, community events, and this has passed down. I, six months, I've had a few. One weekly game night, Jeopardy game night, dog, make it true. And as soon as you got, you're trying to get that, I think. We've had community uh game night on our one, one, one night out of the week. I'll make it to Jeopardy and show them, and then, you know, the the, and that's one way that we're. Uh we're, we're trying to invest back into our view, and that's something that I want to expand on with. Uh limited funding that we have in the chapter, you know, majority time, people donate, and we donate ourselves. But that's one thing I want to really share, because there are future, I want to invest more money into them, into facilities for them. I'll get.
Yeah, thank you, Secretary Treasurer. Singer, for your comments today. Members of the committee, is any time for questions? Okay, uh members of the committee have asked, uh. If you don't have a chapter resolution today, the Budget and Finance Committee will continue to accept chapter resolutions through the month of June. Uh we did tell Eastern Agency June twentieth, uh. But because of planning meetings, the chapter meetings, the month of June is fairly fact, and we should get that uh. Um. Make sure we communicate that back with those that will be in visit with, and maybe we'll work with. There's a public information officer today, but probably Julian. Alright, we'll work with the Speaker's office to get that information out, that we'll we'll still welcome chapter resolution through the month of June. Uh because we'll be meeting with the oversight committees in the month of July, so as long as we get it before our oversight begins. I would do it so, but I appreciate that, thank you. Next, we have uh Liz Rose Gillis from Chichimiso Chapter. Next, we have uh Liz Rose Gillis from Chilchibiso Chapter.
So the issue back on the um, did you see G A I'm gonna on my um my my comment I referenced this um budget if you can't so on the fifth policy G A um chapter utility but give and then uh recommend also she John though then I know this year is A R that's that but we did put forth a resolution for summer youth to be considered as a fixed cost. Then they in how the da ah not here had to the this year or um really this public hearing is very beneficial um auto um utilities indeed that's what I have under there and then under external funding G A cash match G um uh state funds G with Navajo Nation dollar for dollar question that um oh oh um uh you have on to now my case so that is uh we do have a lot of um capital projects that we want to implement based off our I C I P so it is uh okay obviously cash net to be although under executive branch she gave where the chapters are under D C D and then a department under administrative service center hang yet so my recommendation would be go back to the five agency for A S C right now that eight G door is not for our area it's not working I heard Cayenta made the comment saying that the Cayenta A S C is not making the effort to help those chapters been in a A been in a the Shinigee uh Mexican water was under ship rock and article non mission then he has been with the program for quite some time and really knows the system so do your check who's not the I need the R C which now who's not this year um the prior year as when I'm having an issue I usually email Shandine and Miss um Parrish and Miss Patty here with about on the finance side at the chapter level a lot of the high base on each and this either um I don't know what the something block is um so uneven the gradual far the best on the check when you got so that's not right we're all Navajo Nation program but why is it that window right gets to get fit into their money first where at a chapter level this is all one of their keep that mean so um ego issue bombs and case so then it goes back to what Mr. Gabe mentioned in the Ben drive that they need Nisha everybody even L G A non L G A we work with the Ben so A V D A um actually all the nine in Washington um auto um that's what I have and then um budget yeah nothing if we are your formula needs to change it's not equity it's not equity and um the thing is Mexican waters L G A certified chapter and there's uh about forty-four or forty-five other chapters or L G A that they're non certified a couple um the staff salary the ocean across the board if it's oh and then he 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 C P doesn't come to the chapter and say hey um because general wage adjustment well don't don't hit one eight on that thank you thank you for let letting giving general weight adjustment to the L G A certified chapters so um and and tired let me sit on heat on on odd okay yes that's no but yet only that's me and then so uh here had to the issue for giving us that G W A um but the Navajo Nation boys have always enjoyed their G W A get L G A give them that so they don't they yeah um shut on so case so then it's it's easy to do um across the board and you put nothing for this at the division level department level they say their position first and then whatever little money is left and they checked the check for you so it all that's not equity I guess out of our funds okay so yeah I tell them they go it's the auto um I forgot mine this she's a shop on the dish I've seen that they send my fact anyway I thought um the chapter non administrator classic G A um it's really limited cause of the workforce of Bahadist the we get workforce it's a ten but workforce is not following through with their um objective don't they tend to won't keep changing that evening although only the only part of the one charge they are not right and then we end up with personnel issues and all sorts of things or they just they don't do that I think that needs to be enforced so um there's many more I can say but uh that to go on my second round on I'm explaining for that so they they yeah um I just forgot what I was going to say on the B C P um but anyway I remember on my second round so thank you thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you head thank you uh President Sackboy for coming here to the Welcome Center today uh and it was your second time participating and thank you for hosting the Budget Finance Committee last year we do appreciate that I'll go to your neighbor can I ask a proud you for follow up questions?
Okay thank you um I appreciate your recommendations uh shimaya shit I wanted to also extend while today we're talking about the comprehensive budget um you have your certified chapters uh what year were you certified twenty?
We were certified twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve?
Yeah.
So literally for the past fifteen years of certified chapters who were eligible for some of that permanent trust fund income interest.
Yes.
Which has on average been about forty million dollars a year and so. Right. Yeah. So about twenty million should have been divided every five years based off of the L G A chapters so moving forward to the council waves that provision but I want to support the L P's planning for future incentive um is you're gonna have approximately like four hundred thousand dollars for the next five years if it's approved so we're gonna have to work with the chapters or what that two million dollar budget will look like um because it would have also been like how then is the chapter building up their internal system because that money doesn't have any restrictions right now and so but it needs a lot of planning it needs a lot of conversations because on the other hand have a lot of red tape because we've also experienced bad actors although misuse of dollars or not go by policy and procedure that's why you see more funding here for audits but I wanted to um make sure that you're aware of of that and be um at the forefront of uh looking at a five-year plan with about four hundred thousand additional dollars if you're the chapters but uh the second area is because you could also then work on what salaries to want for your personnel for the next five years but remember you have to sustain that afterwards.
Yes.
So because I I think chapters should look at some of the money coming from Navajo Nation like grants and say like if it's three years in three years I'm gonna do X Y and Z fund us but you have to show that you've done that I think that's where we'll be able to know what chapters are ready to move forward or maybe chapters need to combine to get um that technical assistance um and so we're looking at some type of twenty-sixth reform and we were just talking um the council was supposed to move take action or reform but I don't know it's it's been presented to every agency but a northern agency I think they have this R D C kind of something northern agency to talk about it so I just wanted to make sure that you're aware um because I think you're um when you talk about summer youth as a fixed cost we're actually gonna change or we're relooking at that um definition of fixed cost really that should be like to keep the lights on but you might start talking about this is mandated funding but I think that's what you're talking about when it comes to summer youth is that you could get it every year right now it's like discretionary supplemental every year and destabilizes the program so we could say for the next five years we're gonna fund summer youth at this amount at this chapter that you have you're able to plan that's why we want to move from a projected budget into a two-year budget so that they could be not talking about fiscal year twenty twenty-six but it would be twenty twenty-seven you would already know your budget and and I think that would help stabilize a lot of the programs and at the chapter level so I wanted to give you that high level summary I'm not sure um how it's presented but hopefully at our agency meeting I know the new leadership wanted to empower little agency so I I always think it comes from the budget it comes from the funding and what services our our community members want and you have another great opportunity with Utah but I I just wanted to say and I forgot to say this with Chilchutu Tuvan we'll come back what we have from community development on your I C I P plan is uh number one project is scattered house wiring uh you haven't secured any money but this year you're asking for four point five million your second project is upgrade waterline on all residential homes uh no funding has been secured but you're asking for six point seven five million and your third project is the Utah broadband project the chapter has secured a hundred thousand and you're asking for one point three million so I just want to make sure if that's correct or just encourage you could go back work with your teeth and update uh because Navajo Nation and operation on does require that plan and of course we'll be looking at you know what's they have said what was funded before you know your ARPA project is it a triple R we're doing all of that stuff on our end to give chapters kind of this history the last ten years how much funding Navajo Nation funding has come in because we're also hearing when you talk about it's not equitable there's certain communities that feel they're not getting the resources that they need so we just want to be transparent kind of eventually we want to have a dashboard and anybody can look into this and hopefully in October we're gonna implement a new system for Navajo Nation so you could look up to say where did that money go if I have a head start um or why why aren't my senior centers getting moved then you can look at there and look at the contract until we could start looking people accountable and we could do it as you know as a nation rather than just like we can't access that information we gotta ask controller and then wait for them to provide a report O M B to make sure it's right and that's very kind of conceiving so um I think that'll help us in the future because you'll have that data inputting and it and in the future that we can give incentives that chapters that are ready to grow and forward then get that funding. Um it could now be a great way to move forward.
Yeah. All right thank you um I have more maybe I'll go right up too so thank you for the time today.
Yeah I know uh the Navajo we can talk mission uh is calling provided the commissioners uh uh resolution template so when those resolution templates uh become resolution to the chapters we do appreciate that all right next we have Helen Meyerson Helen Meyerson. The floor is yours. The Arctic I T.
John. Good afternoon um. My name is Helen by Meyerson um resident of Monument Valley on J D community um I do have some concerns about our community. Yeah going to the and the whole deal has um um on the border of Utah and Arizona um we do have a lot of issue that's been going on in our community I don't really know much about the um all the numbers over here on the bulletin um all the stuff that's on there like the fixed cost allocation it done anything I don't know what what they stand for and everything so I'm sure everybody um that are here in our community shouldn't stop over speed as in that but um that's where I stand but um thank you for coming out here um you should not uh um being a in having the meeting here in the Welcome Center um we welcome you to our land I know um we do have a lot of issues that I want to kind of bring it up to the table where um there's a lot of money that should be um put aside for um the in our area and living in in an area where um we're identified as Utah Navajos and some are Arizona Navajos on the fundings that we get um a lot of us don't receive we don't get any kind of help with these fundings and for some reason um with the Utah Navajo Trust Fund um we're always told that you guys already have money guys Utah Navajos already have money and so we're like collected any fundings from Navajo Nation um at our chapter level so um these kind of stuff we face um so um I never got any kind of help through Navajo Nation um just living here I've been born and raised here in Monument Valley area I know that um Navajo Nation um gets a lot of funding from um the tourism we live in a tourist area every day we deal with a lot of um different nationalities people from coming from all over the world they do pay money at the fee sometimes they pay here at the steps where um I don't know how much they charge them but um I know a lot of money are coming in and that benefits everyone all the way into New Mexico Arizona um so um A I don't um I've seen yeah go on the hunt for has ama han send um being a community here um first of all uh as you know um there's hardly any of my people here any of my community here and that's um one minute remaining oh my gosh um so um A Alan his um Navajo Tribal Park we need roads we need fundings more money for the Navajo Tribal Park all the um facilities down there as like the party jobs that are down there they're always full um even um I just put on because I don't sense I have one minute um and then the roads are pretty bad um and then our O J two preschool has been shut down O J two senior citizen has been shut down um even our post office we barely got a place over here at the um these these buildings the vendors office over here um and then help scene we need funding for the housing for Utah and Arizona sound towers is one of the um things that's pretty needed in our area then we don't even have one and the only one that we're using um is Goldings it's on Goldings property then.
Your um five minutes is up I don't know if it we can come back to you around two if you have some more comments to continue on your list but I also have your written comments too here.
Um I do have a lot a lot to say but um like with the Navajo mountain roads and even the old and wood yeah.
Okay.
And Aida and he.
We'll come back to you for round two I just don't know if anyone because we're almost at the end of the list we probably have three more people and then come back for round two.
All right.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for um our presenters apart? No questions right now but we'll come back to you. Thank you. Uh let's see thank you Ms Meyerson for your comment uh maybe Mr. Talking but we can do I know uh there's no dollar amounts right now being but if you could do um when you're assessing all of the public comments um to kind of do a tally so I heard Navajo Tribal Parks here is the first time I'm hearing that Navajo Tribal Park should have additional dollars but but this is coming public asking for these dollars and I know from working with like Four Corners Four Corners they don't have a bathroom at their facility either or there's basic infrastructure needed here in the Tribal Parks and as a factor President Nightmare's message about tourism yet how much money is actually invested for the Navajo Nation uh so I I maybe questions you but I appreciate your comments apart yet. Next we have. Twila Madison. Madison Twila Madison the L G A chapter.
Press the button.
Thank you guys for being here I am your Alden Chapter Secretary treasure. Ever since I've been inaugurated I have not signed any checks I have not signed I have not reviewed any of the three budget reports balance sheets um reconciliation so I'm here to speak about yes we have money I think it's very important that um we have policy changes we've just explained that. It is crucial crucial to receive technical support for various technical challenges a significant aspect of this is ensuring that project managers are funded at our chapter house instead of having the community service coordinator in control as workload is excessive resulting in slower. You require specific allocation of funds for the M P D E D H H S and law and order to solve police related issues as well as fire response given that town of Monument Valley relies on support from neighboring towns. Additionally, we need assistance with roads maintenance including gravelling and and repairing certain roads furthermore a dedicated project manager is necessary for senior programs and the head start programs post office etc. This is also a discrepancy there is also a discrepancy regarding the allocation of funds at the chapter house particularly concerning um starting up how the funds are utilized since the Monument Valley is situated on the border of Utah and Arizona most of our funds that we receive is from U N T F and they do accept for us um they accept community members to live on the state of Utah rather than the state of Arizona so I think that it's also important to um review those budgets and so that our community is able to receive a fair amount of money rather than community members receiving one like ten thousand one three thousand it just varies so I think there's a there's a lot of confusion in that area. And as chapter secretary. I would like to be a part of reviewing that those budgets but since I'm not allowed to review them I think this is highly concerning that's all I have to say thank you.
All right thank you uh Ms Madison um Mr. Taki uh today during our public comments we heard consistency that the A S C is not coordinating with the chapters in this region um could you draft or could you send an email uh as soon as possible if you could send it within the hour to the Division of Community Development to Mr. Jerry and Charlie and C C uh Berna what was her last name? The A S C?
Yeah.
Lena Lena where look at the information uh so that we can we can make sure that the chapters in this area uh are receiving the adequate support because they do have the funds as as mentioned but they're not getting the support to get those checks out so um most well budget finance will send an email out right now to make sure that uh we're supporting the chapters to get those funds.
And the main thing that I wanted to point out here I think I felt very comfortable speaking rather than reading from my uh note is that it's very I think it's very very important being on like firsthand is that we need more money towards project managers project managers that can handle technical issues and technical um projects because when you have one person like this community service coordinator who's in control then then like other constituents other elected officials opinions don't matter you don't really have an input.
Thank you thank you so much I do appreciate that we'll get that in the Division of Community Development I also wanted to just I went to the public can you all guess how many project managers that Navajo Nation has right now? Guess how many project managers you think six?
Zero.
Zero even out five for the entire Navajo Nation feeling have five project managers five project managers to manage one hundred and ten chapters five project managers to manage the senior center projects I have five project managers to manage the any new buildings on the Navajo Nation but each of those project managers they manage over six hundred projects so that thing's moving because we need more project managers and we've we've made efforts to have project managers at least for the delegates and then we've heard project managers at the chapter level and then it goes to title twenty-six where it says the vice president should be the project manager so it's it's kind of holding you know taking a look at who is actually the project manager where do we set aside money for that but you appreciate comments we could go into further discussion about that you want to come back for round two.
It's already all it's creating chaos.
All right next we have um. After this finale is gonna be Myra Tuttle after this title is gonna be Clarence Rockwell this finale the floor is yours.
Yeah good morning um not uh Shandine and um your community are your committee members and staff to stay this uh. And then given me this opportunity all of us community members this opportunity to pop on the budget. My name is Alexi Finali I am project manager and worst lady chapter. Anyways I'm the vice president there but um one of the things that really confuses me is um at the chapter orientation we're told um you stay out of chapter operation to you just come in you have your meetings and that's it that's your responsibility it's what we are told and then I I was really puzzled about that so um one of the issues that I want to bring up is employment at the chapter house um I know that the chapters receive a P and sports make is located in remote rural area um like makes. remote rural area on La Mesa. And much of the employment funding source is from the Public Employment Fund that employs the chapter members because we're so remote. Our agency offices in Chinlea. We're so remote that we cannot really take advantage, our, our community members cannot really take advantage of going into Chinlea or elsewhere to pay workforce. In the end, that obviously because everywhere we go, we don't have a paid thoroughfare to go anywhere. At least those who live around the chapter area go into, you see, a paid road. Of all, what I noticed is within the short time that I've been there, like six months, what I've noticed is the Navajo Nation departments are asking the chapters to provide their own resources to address NPLs, housing, or other like veteran housing, you make the road, you do this and that. Our chapters included the, the VP funds long time ago. And then, and then I said, where is the funds? Have we received our funds? And I know that the, the PNA or the Navajo Nation approved the second allocation was supposed to start in April or in June now. And the chapter is telling me we don't have the money, we haven't received it. So I'm like saying, okay, it's July, August, September. And just a little bit over three and a half months, a fiscal year is going to be over. And and so the chapter hires maintenance workers or heavy equipment and clerical staff to address, you know, the shortage of staff at the chapter level. Another thing, as I mentioned, we're rural and remote. And senior center, I have an issue with that. And NALTAC is telling the senior centers, no to go boxes. But I kind of looked at it, the furthest that the chapter goes out is 20 miles. And that's a remote area. And then towards the, that's like towards the northeast and then towards the northwest, it's 17 miles. Imagine our senior senators, some seniors, our elderly is going to that bumpy road, you know, and, and then there the climate weather that our, that elders leaves are not able to make it to the chapter house to get their food. And it's just, I just thought that was unreasonable. Maybe someone from the faculty members were able to go to the chapter house and get these to go boxes. But now they're told not to. And the other things, some of the time, I, I mentioned the, the roads. And the other thing is the water line project. It's been stalled. At least the one that's supposed to be coming to us from the Mini Mills Waterline Project. It's, it stopped. The, in GUA, IHS, OEH, and NACO, which is, where is it only system to receive? And what I asked the chapter, at the chapter is let's build a water well, you know, closer to our unity so we can address our community members instead of, you know, Kenta, chapter group, you know, they're getting this Mini Mills Waterline project, but it hasn't moved anywhere for at least six years. The other thing I wanted to touch on is BCD.
Shima, you're, I think you're at seven minutes now.
May I mention BCD just real quickly?
Do you want us to come back to you? Do you have more to say after BCD?
I have, I just want to touch up on BCD and administrative service centers.
Okay, do you, do you want more time to expand on that? You want like 10 minutes because the ground is unlimited?
This one or the next one?
Next one. Okay. You can go, there's no timer on the next one, so.
All right.
Give you my microphone. Do, thank you for, thanks. Thank you for coming all the way from Forest Lake. That's quite a drive to come out here to begin Aldito. So had a, well, we also had a public hearing scheduled on Wednesday for Chinlea. So if you know people that are not able to attend, tomorrow we have a public hearing in Nanjing Side, which is Brooklyn, New Mexico. And on Wednesday will be at Chinlea, at the Chinlea in GUA building. So if you know more people that you wish were here today, off with our comments on Wednesday, Chinlea, that's the next closest one. I'll go to Delegate Lester Yasi.
Yeah, I love it. Chairman Chair request, I don't see some division on you. Though, yeah, I don't need to, so I don't see any shit in it. In the shit, I don't know.
Myra, oh yeah. I'm going to chairman Amber Kness.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, just as we're trying to comply with the law. If we have the vice president for Forest Lake here. Um, sorry, I had to step out. I wanted to make sure one of our elders was okay and she's doing good. She's waiting for her ride. One of them had thought so. Trying to make sure she's not good. When I'll vote, go take your sandwich. And I want to say in one of the buildings, there's about sixteen local teenagers. They're gonna start doing a week long. Um, training on doing some digital storytelling. So if leadership wants to go there, Mr. Black, since they're your community member, maybe just go say hello to them and and see what they're gonna be filming. Okay, so Forest Lake, uh, so what we have here is for your number one project is a gooseneck. Hotel. I don't know what that is. Hotel. Well, lot of dicks. And a vehicle purchase. So it does say that the chapter secured one hundred and twenty-five thousand. But that this year you're asking for four hundred and eight thousand. Again, if this is not correct, uh, then you'll have enough time for the next chapter meeting to have a level here to update their priorities. But it has to be a vetted project. Um, if you're asking for construction and if, and if it's not vetted, then ask for plan and design funding. Your second project is the senior center renovation. So the chapter hasn't secured anybody. But in the first year, you asked for one point four million. And I would ask, um, I'm gonna jot down. Since the council did approve over under eighty million dollars for senior centers. I'll see what was, if there was any funding requested for Forest Lake. If not, um, I'll work with your delegate and make sure it's part of the second round. We are with new information, um, going to fund and report to the council and President Knight, the second round of senior citizen funding. And on this list, um, your third project is, um, your plan design. Construct the many meals water line. So it says here the chapter hasn't secured any funding. And you're seeing here requesting, uh, one point six three million dollars. That's what we have in terms of just your plan, your top three projects for the next five years. Um, a suggestion could be is, um, you know, it's in phases and different fiscal years asking for funding. Cause right now it would be the chapter asking for like one, like over ten million dollars. Um, so we're, we'll be looking at like what allocation you got for work, like how can you spend your FRF funding? Say, how set projects? Everything else, and we're gonna have a nice package for all of the delegates to see the last allocated for projects. And we talked about project management. How many have actually been funded? Is there a shortfall? Where the community's priorities has changed? And sometimes that happens because of COVID. So for myself, I would also ask from every community, how many community members do not have electricity and how many community members do not have running water? And brought them. I, I think every chapter should be able to tell us what that need is. Uh, because that water is a high priority for this council. But it does take a lot of time, as you mentioned with the many meals. So, um, I just wanted to give that information very something interesting. Oh, chill, chill. I, I didn't tell her. Well, yeah, I'll go back to you too. But here's, uh, chill two bit more. So your number one project is your, is your whole type purpose building? Um, it doesn't tell, it doesn't say how much you've secured from the chapter. But you're asking for five point nine million this fiscal year. Your second priority is the Chilchubito C store. It was my night in region. Was it? The council funded it, but it was one item veto by President Knight. So that means there should, there should be conversations. Uh, but this year you're asking for eight point six million. It was funded at eight and six million. Uh, your third project is Chase and Allay Waterline Project. No, uh, chapter money secured, but you're asking three million. So if that's not correct, again, just update your wins and, uh, chapter resolutions. And all of my last comment will be for our host, old Jito. Jito. Uh, number one is your chapter house. And this year your request meeting, uh, no money secured. But request being fifteen thousand this fiscal year. Uh, your second, your second priority is, um, Oh, got to. So not quite, either. That's what I want to.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, guide tool. Okay, how, how I tool? I think it might be spelled wrong here. Let's check your win system. So phase one, you're asking, uh, the chapter secured two hundred and four thousand. Uh, this fiscal year, you're asking for an additional eight point seven million. Uh, your third project is phase two. The chapter hasn't secured any funding. Um, and you're asking this year for one point six billion. And the reason why I'm telling chapters how much you're asking for this fiscal year, we're gonna look to see if you've been successful in the past implementing and using these dollars. Because a lot of that for our projects were not in contract. And so we had to use general funds. So if you're asking for millions of dollars and you got funding from Sehassen like in twenty eighteen and you're asking for more money, that's gonna be an easy answer for me is like, no, not until you spend the money you got in twenty eighteen. Cause that was seven years ago and we've been out of, you know, COVID. So there should be some action and we get quarterly updates on these Sehassen projects. There's been some permanent trust fund projects out there like Children by the Light, agriculture, um. You can see a few projects for restaurants. For anything for safety. The water line right? The big, the big investment was the Western Aids Water Pipeline. It was like forty-eight million. Oh, then a hotel C store. Yeah. Shantu C store. And Shantu Hotel. So Shantu received a lot last five years ago. So it's someone else to kind of get, uh, learn from what Shantu did and divide their projects and get. You could also hire your own project manager. There's other chapters that have been doing that. Okay, I'll go back on with.
Yeah, Shada, thank you, um, for. Uh, I think sometimes when chapters submit that ICIP information, you think it goes nowhere. But, um, it really goes the conversation about what can be funded. I wanted to ask Mr. Tommy, you said there might be some extra plates left?
Yes.
Where are they located? All right. Like extra plates there. Have I got? But need extra places, um, feel free to take some. We'll go back to the list here. Uh, next we have Miss Tuttle. Myra Tittle.
I'm actually Myra Tittle. Ta, Ansha. I'm Ashish. I'm Ashish Jinda. I'm Hannah Dashina. I just wanna say hello to everybody. I remember you from E T U. And you gave me the lipstick. It still happens. I still make mushrooms. And it's like, oh, how do you make that? So, um, thank you for being here, sound leadership of Navo Nation. I just wanna take this opportunity to advocate for this community. Um, for public safety, um, specifically that community that you kind of questioned about and how they talk. So it's a very rural community. We don't have electricity. We don't have water. Um, my grandparents, their, their entire lives without electricity. We're still waiting to. So I'll be like the third generation because my mom, now the son. Um, so my grandfather, Jesse Brown, was the chairman, chapter, um, back in the day. But I just, I had an incident out there when we did. Very rural communities, uh, there's neighbors like three miles. And there was a young lady who walked up my door at three in the morning. That Sunday night, Wednesday morning. And she was covered in blood. She had no shoes on. And drove to the emergency and came home. But she had been assaulted. And so I'm advocating for more public safety out in that very rural community because there seems to be a high incident rate of, um, of assault and alcohol use, drug abuse. And then because I feel like it's so rural that there's just not, um, law enforcement present that they feel comfortable coming out there with doing the intensive thing. But I just, you know, it really touched my heart that this young lady um, had been assaulted out there and went nowhere because, you know, first of all, she's a woman. And I became a woman's right, um. That just really bothered my heart to have. That was, there was nothing normal about having that. Standing at my doorstep with blood on her face. She had, um, head injuries. Have a very traumatic experience out there. Beautiful place where we're supposed to have death and, you know, just live to life, right? Even though we don't have much water, it's still a wholesome place that we call home. As, so I will just advocate for more, um, budgeting for law enforcement. Safety. In that manner of, you know, kind of policing that area a little better for our community members, um, are, are, they don't get assaulted like that. I just think about what if something worse happened to her? And she was walking with no shoes on. And then she could have died of it. And she could have been raped, you know, just. It's just something I feel as we could, um, do better for our community here. And then, um, I'm moving on. I just want to advocate for the water line, the electricity line, um, like you were mentioning. How big one does have that budgeting. We're in the phase two part, but if there's nothing happening. And, um, we just keep getting the same, um, runaround that other membership, the community have brought up is that, um, N T U A, I H S, or you kind of like throwing it back and forth. We never get anywhere. And, um, so we're still without electricity. We're still without running water. And, um, I just wanna bring that to your attention as our leadership and, um, I just also wanna, um, bring up the fact that we're in this law center instead of a chapter house. And I know somebody else about the fact that we don't have a chapter house, but I think you mentioned that there was something in the, um, way of, um, you have the other priorities from this chapter. So this is right here. We're in the well system and we're not in the chapter. We don't have a chapter. And I think, you know, the services that we're not receiving here are very evident in that, in the law. So I feel like that should be worked out. And then, um, our, uh, community senior center is closed down. So I just always, um, because that the elderly people and they're not saving, um, their much needed services. So I just wanna bring those things up really quickly and, um, I also wanna talk about, you know, counseling services that I feel like Navo Nation, um, it's kind of missing the mark. I know we have I H S. New John here does have some support systems, but there's like a deficit in access to something. I worked for, um, vocational rehab. And the current community members may not be used, um, employment, but I don't care anything for, um, disability in transitions with. That's why I work, um, within, um, with, um, uh, vocational rehabilitation, other education office in Navo Nation. And, um, I just, I just can see there, there's a deficit in the access to, um, vocational rehabilitation, you know, like services. For our youth that are disabled, that have, um, physical or mental, um, disability. And, um, so I think the order for needs to be done for them to become a employee. Because, you know, deployment is to leave as part of a holistic approach to counseling. Mental health. You have a job for people to feel better about. Their, um, their status as a member of the committee, a contributing member of the and I feel like those, um, children, young people needing help as well because I think they're often not thought of in a way, you know. There is a member of the community, they're beautiful, they're with the lens of their disability or they're actually fighting with the and I want to advocate for, you know, physically or mentally and, um, the services that they get. But I do know like some of budgeted down points, there are federal dollars available that something that you have to approve our, our community, um, to the, to the transition to employment for people.
Just Tutter? Yes, I'm gonna, uh, come back to the committee. I think they have questions for you.
Okay.
I do appreciate your testimony today, um, but I again, uh, he would like unlimited and we can come back around to chairman.
Appreciate it. Yeah, A, it's great to see you again in your own community, right? Right? Um, and then, uh, you were, we're monkeys over there with the socie, so we're gonna all like get all the hot scoop on everything. Make sure you're behaving yourself. Uh, appreciate it and, um, I wanted to ask as a follow-up. You mentioned, you know, the violence in the community. So I just, when I got, I was, I was late to this public hearing because we're on a call with the Division of Public Safety. And saying they need, uh, a tribal community response plan. What is their response? When there's an incident that occurs? Cause what we see is we don't have a best practice on Navo Nation anywhere. Where we have crime that's committed very close to a police station and they're still delayed. Cause at any time in any agency, you only have two officers for the full agency. And so we'll talk about substations. They built them, but we can't. We can't get those personnel, can't get the police officers in there. There's such a shortage. So what can we do for us to increase prevention? Or when there's a crisis response? In this budget, um, we'll see the missing effort. You know, part of that funds Q and H S, their victim advocate program. Because the Trump administration is wiping out anything that says tribal. They wipe out basically all of our funding for our, um, victim advocates. So now we should know there's enough money to sustain that program. So I'll, I'll make sure that I talk to, uh, their team there in terms of how they're making sure the community is aware that there's advocates available. And when they go to the ER, sometimes the medical centers are not set up in a way that's trauma informed. Or like if a police officer you know, goes and speaks to the, um, there could be like some communication help. We need. Sure that have that like a conversation. Um, and, and we are, this committee this year has in our strategic plan to develop a fund specifically for public safety, like a comprehensive approach. So that maybe like C funding to start a program, but they'll have it, so there could be some more innovations. We're learning now that there's this whole effort for E nine one one. I think, um, hopefully I could get an update. I'm not sure if that has been an eastern or western agency. But I know more than we're gonna get an update on Wednesday. So I'll ask about this community. Uh, to what we hope to is to be able to call our assistants and have someone live. Start documenting and, and getting you help. And also documenting, you know, perpetrators. Because it's often some they know, some in their own home. So how do we make sure there's, um, you know, your closest shelter here is Blassing? And that's funded partly by, um, federal funds we get in Navo Nation. Have the K M to shelter, but sometimes it's only halfway open. That could be areas where at least you provide safety for an individual listed at that point. So I appreciate you. Um, that's a very real situation that I don't hear in communities enough. Maybe it's, they're, they're ashamed of what's happening. But if we don't talk about it, we can't prevent it and we can't address the issues. Um, cause the last thing you need to focus in on is, um, not the last thing, but one of the big things is our statute of limitation. So if there's like a major crime right now, you know, there's maybe a three-year statute of limitation. They'll get so set and change into ten years, but there was just a, I mean, there was a murder case on the FBI decline. And there wasn't enough evidence to prosecute. And our prosecutor kept asking FBI for the evidence. And they wouldn't give them the e- evidence. So our statute of limitation expired. So the feds are not prosecuting, Navo Nation's not prosecuting. So now this family knows that this individual violently took their relative and walked around stop three. And I think that's this whole system of violence, we've normalized violence and, and we just have to be brave enough to talk about it and courageous enough. So I appreciate you standing before us. Telling that story, because that's also very traumatic. And I'd like to connect you, you need like yourself with advocate. Sometimes it's just processing that experience because you're so rural. And knowing that that type of violence is happening in your, you know, in your area, your immediate area. And bring on a lot of stress. Bring on a lot of stress.
So I'm aware of the last budget for public safety and law enforcement. Uh, I know you choose, you have, um, released a public statement that there should not enough, um, officers. But but, um, I'm wondering if, um, giving those contracts back to the government is an option? So that they can do the law enforcement or Navo Nation. I don't know. It just seems like, you know, for, um, the leadership or them to tell us that they can't do it because we don't have the people for it. There's just not enough. It's, it seems to me like, um, it lacks the accountability and the responsibility to maybe, um, when we hear stuff like that and, um, sort of making excuses and explaining it and justify it by saying we don't have it. It just, um, like you said, creates that reciprocal dynamic of people normalizing or it becomes emotive. And this can be for us to do that for a while. And I feel like there's just more that I can do. There's some exceptions for that as a community member. And I am aware of what you told me. And, um, I know Navo Nation has, um, the public information app to us that there's just not enough resources to do. So I just, I feel like you could use other avenues that we could take um, to address that issue. Because it is an issue in our, our communities. I should say please. Et cetera. So a lot of, I feel like that incident within my community that goes in my front doorstep is, I know, part of that, um, this evening, and it's just women. Um, scenario, we can, you know, who knows what could happen to them. Yeah, but I was the community response in that case. I drove her to the, um, ER in Kanta and then I made a police request. And that was all I could do. I don't know if anybody else in that community would have helped her. Uh, there's that possible. Um, with that, I just wanna say thank you, uh, for your time and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Miss Tattle. I wasn't really good. Any other questions?
Awesome. Just. Thank you staff. So I just wanted to, um, the comments regarding our relatives have challenged their physical abilities or mental abilities. Um, I know that the speaker's office needs a Navo's ability committee or council. If you could, uh, make sure that speaker is aware of this suggestion in terms of how our relatives can have access to, um, workforce development. And it's part of their economic plan. And we all know with our teaching, these are our relatives that have these exceptional talents. Um, it's our responsibility and our need to, to provide, um, opportunities for them. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Shada, Chairman Amber Kness, but Friday. Next we have Mr. Clarence Rockwell. After Mr. Rockwell is gonna be Mr. Clark Talis Jr. Mr. Rockwell, the floor is yours. Oh. Miss Holly, is it just a written submission? Just written? Okay, thank you. That's what I asked. Yeah. So I was just asking for, okay, thank you, Navo's commission administrators. We'll go to Mr. Talis. Five minutes for the first round and then we'll go to second round. Second round's unlimited. First round's five minutes. Welcome.
Yeah. My name is Tom Talis Senior. Uh, I don't know. And, uh, If I, you see, the, 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 the. I know uh, yeah, I need to say no. What did you get this month? I don't know. I don't. One of the. Things I'm really proud of. Is. I'm a veteran. I'm doing really good. So I'm a gentleman. Things to say about uh. Being part of a veteran or what I know, what I feel. That's really important to me and everybody else in the community. Even across the Navajo Nation. Hey, uh, somewhere in your budget or whatever conference that you have. I think uh. More resources should be. Uh, added towards water protection, clean water. I know I uh. Uh, I'd like to see personally. That our grandkids. Although college graduate recently or. Maybe a high school graduate down the line, maybe two or three more years down the road. I'd like to have uh suggestions to the parents and everybody else. Uh, to be trained. In the water meddling, water hydrologists. Anything that's related to. Uh, protecting the water. I know it, you know, naturally. Clean water. It's not just for our own government, human consumption. It's going to go to our, towards our uh. Health. The animals that we have there then. Although uh, I don't know, we just give them the call that. Our sun, but. We have birds and. Insects, small, big, you know. Either size of animal, big animals. What are they? This is what we share with all of them. Of course, with they, uh, I uh. I'm hoping. You know, we do something, you know, really uh, that's uh, some sort of resources for these people and the animals that we have. I didn't get it. I'll try to order a little bit of that. Actually. I don't know, even our own kids, they, they leave, they leave the reservation. Looking for a better place or maybe. Something else that they like over there across the reservation. Although they. You know, just trying to get across what we do. You have something on the home. We have land. They probably have more water than one that they're here. So that conservatory. Of course, they were there. I'm like, oh, I'm sick of this. They probably don't want to talk about it. I don't know, you could uh. To support ourselves. Our communities, our families. Hey, we don't need. Mineral extraction. We have, we have already suffered from it. A great deal. Especially in the area. What's all, all really here like that? Uh, we took over here. We just down the road here. I did. You think of how they uh. The things comes. Please. So we breathe in. Without danger. You can probably describe it as something like poison or breathe every day. Okay, then uh. I even have a soccer story that's all, you know, it's all up to us to also participate and listen to us. We have to listen. Support each other in a way that. Um, the ultimate goal would be to help a healthy people around here. So I was a new Mexico. And then. What I want to ask is. I don't give it uh. Supporting ourselves and whatever we have, whatever we have, in a way of talent. Give us the opportunity to. Learn or teach us.
Better.
Even our kids learn how to share a sheet at this time of the year. All of that goes into production of, you know, rugs. Oh, without egg. I'm pretty sure they have some senior citizens here that like to teach the young ones. How to weave. Uh. Uh. The, yeah, uh. We say that. Uh, rodeo is the number one sport. Probably need to teach, well, not probably, should. Get involved and um. And then go with others. And they were, uh, so, uh, you know, pass this along to everybody. That will probably turn into some kind of uh. Uh, income. So you're talking about the control. What that, hey, uh, come there, uh, we could do this often. So I hope somebody's listening. I'm pretty sure you know what I'm talking about. On this occasion, we watch this occasion. I'm trying all the time. So uh, I'm a dad, and he may have kind of a job she got there. That's all. Participate. And discussion. How we're gonna. Uh, pull ourselves the next day, pop a bus down the road. No, but I say. I have a, anyone, just keep going. Let's hope that we continue to be here and to be in good health. Listen to each other's. Listen to good advices. Uh. And do good leadership. I'm pretty sure you do have a simple uh. Fantastic. Leadership. What that, hey, this. From baby there, he had to stay there, you know. Uh, it's our best. For. Uh, this guy, he's not here. I didn't see him. He's hurt. He's hurt.
Shicheng, Mr. Talis. Um, I did mention at the very beginning at ten AM that Delegate Chairman Daniels is at the Law and Order Committee today. He's voting on legislation regarding the Chief Justice. Uh, I believe the first five minutes has finished, but we're going to start the second round. And then we'll continue if you have more public comments. So every, every person that has spoken at the public hearings, they get five minutes on the first round. Then the second round, they get unlimited comments on time at that time.
Okay, uh. Let me just go through this a little bit faster.
You're at eight minutes right now. You're over your five minutes.
Tell me, they can tell you that you're on board. That's one thing I really don't like. Tell somebody that you're on board.
The reason why is we're being respectful to everyone that's come here. Mr. Willie Greys came from Navajo Mountain. We have Miss Anali from Forest Lake, and they're all waiting to go for a second turn.
Everything is just.
Well, get your turn again. You know.
I don't care. That will create some sort of. I'll leave right now. You don't like it.
I'm just asking you to be respectful to everyone who's still waiting in line. There's thirteen people in line.
But oh, let me finish this off. Uh, forward back to the pleasure. We have a senior citizen. We do have a lot of uh.
Mr. Talis, if you'd like to continue your public comments, we're going to go through everyone again, and then there's no timeframe after that. So some of the, the people here, they have to go back to work.
So I don't, I don't, I really don't have time. I'm not a decent person. I do have a. A veteran is ready tonight, and I want it either.
Mr. Willie came here. He drove about two hours. This Anali back there drove about two hours. We'll get to you. We're not, we're not going to go past five. Because the, I think the welcome center, they closed today at five. So we'll, we'll get to everyone. It sounds like a lot of people, but uh, they're all respectful of everyone's time and then we'll come back to you. We'll move it through this. Thank you. I do appreciate that. So Mr. Talis offered some comments this afternoon. I don't know if members of the committee have any questions. Hearing none at this time. We're going to go to, uh, back to the top of the list. I don't have anyone after Mr. Talis, so we're going to go back to the top of the list. Top of the list is Mr. Greys, and then after Mr. Greys, does Mr. Robert Black want to offer any comments? Second call for Mr. Black. Hearing none. Uh, Ms. Clarice DeGueye, are you going to offer second comments? All right. Mr. Dalton Singer, will you be offering second? Comments today? All right, he is. I, it's on, whatever. Ms. Rose Gillis, are you offering second round? No, no, we'll take your written comments though. Ms. Martha Sackler will be offering second round. All right. Ms. Helen Meyerson, will you be offering second? All right. Ms. Carla Madison, will you be offering second round? No, no. All right. Uh, Ms. Carol Talis, are you offering second round? Um. Ms. Ellis Anali, are you going to offer? Yes, Ms. Ellis Anali is still here with us. Ms. Myra Tuttle? No. All right, we'll take everyone's written comments, letters, everything is going to be submitted for um official record. Ms. Clarence, Mr. Clarence declined the word only for written. Um, and we'll go back to Mr. Talis. He comes back. Mr. Talis, are you gonna do a second round? Because now we only have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people on the list. So. There's about, so we went down the list. There's seven that's not for second round. So is he gonna offer a second round? Yeah. All right, we'll keep him on the list until he comes. All right, Mr. Willie Greys, where's yours?
Did you say I lived in there? Follow me to midnight? Very good. Yeah. Dead tropical. Anyway, uh. To rephrase. My position and location. The most isolated community. Of the Navajo Nation. We're situated in two states also. Arizona and the state of Utah. And I guess we're between the three states. The Navajo Nation also. And we're situated on three counties. One county, that whole county, Arizona. Taiwan County in Utah. So we have to. Develop our. Concept and also. Prepare to. I guess. Three cuts, bottoms, like we can only have one. Uh, anyway. We have deep cannons. As you can see, there's steps up here. They're as high as that. A thousand. Two. Two thousand feet elevation. From the. Uh, riverbed. All the way to the top. The highest mountain in the Navajo Nation, ten thousand three hundred eighty. Eight feet. Elevation on Navajo Mountain. For that whole island, we could see weather on. And I'm here then. So. Get up there and see a council meeting session or not. Anyway, uh, that, many of the community guys, they're the community. As opposed to the growth of it. Like yet, the timber city should be shipwrecked. Probably. Um. Forty five. Water up, say micro. Compared to the growth of it. To the upside. Population wise, you guys are way up. Opposed to the remote isolated areas. From my community, not the time Navajo Mountain. As I have served over probably twenty, thirty years. Our population back in. Nineteen forties as I'm come. Two thousand plus people living. Self determination. Was working. People planted large field. Valens, posh, corn. And sheep. Would live on. Back in the nineteen thirties. While the rest of the world outside depression years. Nineteen thirty fourth. Nineteen thirty eight. Soup lines. Town full of cities. And that was on the Navajo Nation where. They didn't know what soup line was. They only knew. Latin stew. Every week. That's how. Self determination. Was working. Nowadays, from two thousand plus. Were down to one thousand five hundred or so. A highly educated. A highly skilled. Or relocated. Not under federal orders or the. State orders, but. They have to relocate. To metapole the area, urban areas. In order to attain important. Because the Navajo Nation does not. Invest. In a highly competitive. Infrastructure system. On the Navajo Nation. Car line roads. You then. Waterline. Other water. Thirteen years ago, I secured eight point two billion dollars. Around sixty five. Miles of chunk line, water line. O E H I H F. Was going to do the ladder of lines. Right away, what not? How many years until? Uh, thirteen, fifteen years. Hey, I'm not kidding. I just, O E H. We tried to secure that. That's the chapter takeover. No, 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 that's our trust with society. The same people are saying, where are they? That's what I want to bring up. Depopulation. People are. Because of. Depressed areas. In the remote isolated communities of the Navajo Nation. That's what's happening. We are losing people. They are. Registered with those counties and municipalities. And we're. Taking their registration off. The list on the Navajo Nation. That's what's happening, reality. The other thing is, I'm here to go. I was living in Timber City. And I learned that there was a. Police chase. All the way from Timber City to Navajo Mountain, not the sign. Now the whole police. Right on the tail of. A vehicle. By the time. The vehicle stopped. By the time the police panel showed up. It was too late. Those occupants disappeared to the cannons. And the Navajo police. Are no match for them. They cannot go out. Nothing came out of that. Another incident. Which is still happening, I too, air lift. Trump, substance, youth abuse. Is happening on the. Outfit line areas. And you can't call nine one one. By the time it gets there, it'd be. Forty four hours or forty eight hours. And you, you had to, just, just a couple of obstacles. There were people stranded. I can end. The rainbow bridge, they got stranded. And the community people had to go and rescue them. And they cannot go in there. It's a horse train. I have it. People that run sees emergency service. They can fly away out there. Out there, they'll sit there. Waiting for the. People to be rescued on the horizon. So that's the kind of service that we receive. In terms of law enforcement. It stands, we have to grow, how to control. And expend these resources. Redating. Federal dollars. And that's where it's very important that. We, as Navajo Nation. Go up. And solicit support for economic development. My project. When I was on the. Taiwan Harry Commission, I was on the seven county coalition. And I put that road back at the project. Or jet to Navajo Mountain. There's a cannon chip. One, two, three, four, five chip. In order to get to Navajo Mountain. But if you go along. At the south. You can't hear. It takes two and a half hours. Four and a half hours of time. So. If, if there was a road here directly, it would take five. Less than an hour, an hour. If there was a road here, correctly, it would take about less than an hour. Between Navajo Mountain and Ojito. Towards them. Indicates that we are looking towards. Some type of activity. That we like to see for our community. And those are the ones that we have committed and requested. Lieutenant Governor for the state of Utah, a major, one million dollars. And he's still sitting there. No other agency has come up. I know the question is why is the community on economic development? Somebody went up there and solicited. Now I said, I've been. So we're still trying to get some of those dollars together. So. Environmental impact studies can be completed. And that way, when it's completed, we can secure right away from the bureau. B I E. That's what we need to do. That's what's the. The uh. The flow chart indicator cannot do anything without the right. So that's what we are. And I really support the staff. Their workforce. Or they do. We work with the workforce yesterday. Their times are limited on page. So we hired them on a P P P. But we like to see increased staff. I would like to see. A planner. Out there in the field. A planner that can work possibly with several, three chapters. You can plan and we can use our resources to. And possibly just on a cool relationship with. Outside entities, like engineer firms that we have been working with. At no cost. To plan our community, community development. That's what we need to. Revive our Navajo Nation economic. Depressed. Area. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Willie, former county delegate, also for not to stop. We do appreciate your comments this afternoon. Again. Yeah, what's gonna happen is every public comment is transcribed. Down, it's written down and it's recorded and then we're going to use it to have discussions on. On where we can ask certain divisions on where we need to improve their budgets. So although you may not have the budgets in front of you right now, we're gonna continue to repress. I heard Department of Water Resources, Division of Community Service, A S C Office, also the. The. Public safety was a big one today, which is, we do appreciate that discussion today. But I just was speaking to Norman. And we were having a discussion, I mean, an immediate budget and finance committee leadership meeting after. The public comments to kind of lie what that would look like in our budget this year. Especially when it comes to additional staff at the chapter. To give you an idea, a cost of living adjustment for the retirees was recommended by Budget and Finance Committee. A cost of living adjustment for our employees. That's gonna cost the Navajo Nation thirty six billion dollars so that we can have a cost of living adjustment for the retirees at three percent. We're giving you that ballpark figure because if you look at our revenues, they're declining. There's no new news coming in, no, no open ends, no new energy, nothing. There's no, there's nothing coming in right now. So we have to look at the budget, the heat, the services. We hear the need for services, but we also have to take a look at how much money we have in our pockets. I say that we have seventy million dollars that were unspent, but that, but what that means is, if you look at the revenues. You see that we're mostly riding on investments, but if you haven't watched the news. We don't know which way the, our Wall Street's gonna go, especially with the volatility and discussions of tariffs. And that's it. That tariffs have taken a negative impact on our investments in the first quarter. So it's a real, we're taking a look at the investments from last year. But there is not to say that it won't, it won't, we don't know what it's gonna look like in the F R twenty seven budget. So we are challenged to make sure that this, that the services that are being requested, the more people that voice what we need in our communities. We'll take a look at those continued services because it has to be sustainable for the future. It has to be a cost that we can continue to have a part of the budget because if it's not continued part of the budget, what's the point? I think that's the discussion about the summer youth employees, right? It's kind of like a Band-Aid, like a hot pot, it's not actually something that's consistent. And so like summer youth employees, it's one million dollars, but. That's one more million dollars that's taking away from public safety. You know, that's a decision we made. Do we fund public safety or do we fund summer youth employees? Do we fund additional staff at the chapter or do we fund summer youth? So that's the real question about some of the services, but we do appreciate everyone's input. Essentially, it's kind of like a vote, like, who, like. Where, where do you want this, this money to go? So. I do thank you, Mr. Willie, for your comment, or Mr. Gray Eyes, for your comments today, the president of Nuts on Chapter. And we'll get to everyone's comments this afternoon. I wanted to mention that delegates, our chairman and everyone has been excused for the afternoon. I know she has some caucus. She's the New Mexico caucus chair, so she works with all of the New Mexico delegates to make sure the priorities are being heard in the state of New Mexico. And we have our Arizona caucus chair, that's Vice Chair Carlos Slater, but he's not here today. I think he's still at the Resources Development Committee. So I just want to mention that she's gonna be excused for the rest of the public comment. We'll go to Ms. Clarice DeGaines.
Good afternoon. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to kind of talk about some other issues. So earlier this morning, I was talking about requesting more additional personnel at the chapter level. And what Kiento Chapter is wanting to do is to go into business site leasing. And on June twenty third, Kiento Chapter is hosting a presentation with our V E O. And one of the requirements that we have found out too also. If the chapter is wanting to do business site leasing, we have to have a separate leasing office and to have. Personnel on board. So right now, we don't have that one, so that's kind of a hindrance. Or the certified chapters, if that's something that they want to do, to go into business site leasing. Maybe that's something that the policies need to be looked at. And of course, the other issues that we're really wanting to get addressed is with the D C B A S C office. And I know that earlier, I'll jump to a chapter, one of the chapter secretary had. Posed an issue that she had, maybe that she can't sign checks. That's where I'm at right now. But just a little background for everybody. I used to work for A S C, Kanta A S C Office back in two thousand, two thousand nineteen, right after the pandemic. And at that time, right before I was getting ready to leave, the. The division director and the A S C program manager at the time, they decided to take. They decided to do, to have the S P P S for each agency to be set up as an authorized representative with Wells Fargo. And up to this day, that is still set up, meaning the reason why they did that was because of the large turnover rate at the chapter level. So they kind of took that away. So now chapters, when we have new chapter officials coming on board, when we have a new chapter manager coming on board. The authority, the, the, the check signing, the signature part has to go. Your local A S C office, in this case, it's our Kanta A S C office. And that's, that's the issue right now. So just Jacob, this, that's the reason why. So I'm in the same boat too. The other issue that I want to address to you guys also is, I guess, when you guys are looking at the budget process. Do you guys look at Form Two? As well too, mainly specifically for the chapters. Because that was another issue that I had at the time when I was working for A S C, especially for the non-certified chapters. If you look at these goals and objectives that they put in Form Two. You'll see it says, to obtain local government certification. Some of these chapters have been putting that same goal for the past five, ten years, and they're not getting L G A certified. So I think if you guys are basing it, if the budget is based on format space. That's where we need to start holding these chapters accountable. The other one also I wanted to kind of take into consideration is when the. In your, in the chapter's F M S, it says that the chapters are supposed to be getting audited on a biannual basis. So right now, we're, Kiento's going through an audit and. Where we went through an outside vendor, not with Navajo Nation O A G. And right now, I'm having a lot of language barriers with our current. Auditing firm. And we. No funds given to O A G. Maybe, you know, we would like to get the auditing done with O A G's because they really know what they're looking at because a lot of times. When we're submitting our documents to an outside auditing firm, they're just looking at the transactions. If for the O A G, they're actually looking at the resolution, they're looking at, there's two forms that. The chapter officials are supposed to be signing as well too, when they're doing financial statement reviews. They're actually looking at those. But when it comes to an outside firm, they don't look at those as well. And then also I wanted to bring up. The issue with the, I know in the budget instruction map, obviously, our clarification is the investment portion. You know, it would be nice to have the certified chapters to start doing some investments. I know there's a. I guess it just, the BIM just needs to be kind of be more clearly defined under section attachments for the chapter. It would be nice to have something in there written for when the chapters go after outside, outside source funding. Because to me, as a certified chapter. That's where you should be going after outside funding instead of just looking at the nomination for your funding source. So it would be nice if we could have something outlined in there as well too. And I guess, just from hearing some of the other chapters. What I just need to do is probably just update our I C I P plan to include. A multi-purpose building that the chapter has been looking at. And I believe the total cost is construction ready is about twenty four million dollars. And then the instruction of refixing the diversion day, which. The last estimate that they got was about ten years ago, so they're looking at about almost twenty million as well too for the diversion day. And then also, I know there, Mr. Willie Gray Eyes had brought up the issue of a project manager. And I think for the chapter, immunity chapter, I don't know how that would kind of play into the community land use plan as well too. Because at our chapter, we're having a hard time trying to get community members to be club scene members. And a lot of it is because of how much time that they put into putting these plans together. So I don't know if that's something that can be readdressed or something. I'm not sure about. Those are just some of the things I would, oh, and then the other one. Our chapter vice president was talking about how. If maybe we could have. Like, like, uh, construction carpenters, electric, electricians, plumbers. Maybe have a group of construction for each agency. That way they can go from one chapter to another to finish up projects. Because a lot of times chapters are utilizing their P P projects and they're only, you know, they, their policy. Is, you know, they have to be registered with the chapter. In this case, they can go from chapter to chapter. So, but that's all I have. Oh, and then the other issue with the gaming, that was my other issue too. So the plan of operation just needs to be updated. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. DeGaines. I have some responses to the questions that you're posing. So going to the investment of funds. And this happened back in. October. MacArthur, do you remember when the press release was for Chilchimbezo Chapter? It was November. So in November, the, actually, it was in July, Chilchimbezo Chapter went before the Navajo Nation Investment Committee. And asked if they could invest their settlement dollars to keebody into the Navajo Nation investment pool. And since that discussion, I have been working with Controller Sean McCabe and the Investment Committee to update the master investment policy. Where chapters can invest. Settlement dollars, dollars that are not general fund dollars. Into the Navajo Nation investment portfolio as a subrecipient or as a, as a subpolicy. So I think, Mr. Taki, in the last investment committee meeting, he did approve a draft of those policies, if you recall. Is that true?
Yes.
I believe, I remember the investment policy, but I, I had to step off that call, this is a work session. But that draft of the investment policies for chapters to invest dollars that are not general funds. Are currently, is currently going through the investment committee and they're gonna take a vote on that. Once they take a vote on that, that comes to the Budget and Finance Committee for final authority. Okay, Chilchimbezo Chapter did not want to wait for us, so we took a field trip to the Arizona State Treasurer's Office. And now Chilchimbezo Chapter is the first chapter on the Navajo Nation to invest their own settlement dollars in the treasury. So they invested seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the Arizona Treasury, and they're the first chapter to gain interest. And then decide what they're gonna do with those earnings. And the way they decide that is through their fund management plan that they approved at the chapter level. So they're not gonna come back to the Navajo Nation and ask where those dollars are gonna go because it's entirely up to them. Then Okinto has the opportunity too. I did mention that to the previous leadership, but I think they were. Uh, but I think they were just waiting for um, a, a good administrator to help them. So we can further that discussion on what those potentials are. But I know for the example I've referred to with Chilchimbezo, they are, they're waiting, I think, a five-year period for the interest to, uh, to gain interest. Uh, and I can say right now that they're, that the last time I checked in with them, that they gained about ten thousand dollars on that seven hundred and fifty, now it's sixteen thousand dollars on that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar initial investment. So um, they're investing the community's dollars so that the community can then come back to the table in about five years to determine what to do with those dollars. So that's, that's a little bit more expansion on, on that investment point. Um, but it is possible. The Department of Justice, they, they ran it through and they, they got their green light. So um, that's just an example of, of how those funds are being utilized. Otherwise, we could also consider with the Controller's Office and Investment Committee of the Navajo Nation as well. Um, so two avenues. Otherwise, the budget instruction manual needs to be more clear. I think regarding the accepting the outside funds and working as a recipient of those dollars, I think in the BIM and section, in the um, appendix M, it just says refer back to the BIM. So it would go back to the section of external contracts and grant. And I have pressed Office of Management and Budget to clean that up because it's really hard to understand. Um, so I can, um, again, any amendments will, will workshop that throughout the year. What the committee has told me is, is uh, and I'm sending an email right now to Mr. Charlie. So DCD is listening online, has the president's listening online. I'm sending an email back to Mr. Charlie. I've tried to work with Mr. Charlie on the BIM this year. He sent his email out to the Agency Chapter Leadership, that was before the election. And so when that turnover happened, like Mr. Keito, he was a Western Agency Council President. And I don't think they had enough time to be, as an agency, to develop those amendments. In Eastern Agency, they formulated themselves, where they, they sat down three days to do work sessions and their delegate Lester Yasi, was at some of those BIM work sessions on um, appendix M. Um, I can, I can email you all a copy for you all to take a look at, and then give some comments to that. That's currently just a draft, it's going through legal review. But I think the more people that did uh, have input on that, that's really important. And yet, I was, and you know, I know we're council delegates here, but at some point, we start to do the executive branch's job, you know? Uh, I, I really, I know this committee is, has tries to set that clear line and give the responsibility to the opposite of the President and Vice President. I don't see a representative from Western Agency from OPVP. You hire two representatives from Western Agency, but they're not here. Or where's Mr. Herman Farley, our favorite Utah representative? I picked on Mr. Farley because he sits on, says, Navajo Utah Commission with me. All right, Mr. MacArthur, Reverend Horace, and Mr. Taki, we'll just note that for the Office of the President and Vice President, make sure that those needs are met. Um, and then I see your other suggestions, but I don't know if members of the committee have other questions. Well, yeah, Sharon Yasi, have you talked? Doug, Lester Yasi, Doug, and Norman McGee? New Mexico has one.
I don't know, I don't think. I buy it, you know, I thought. Still don't know yet. I would, I'm dead, I told you, it always so hard. You look, when the border, border West together in the same open, that it's near, basically, not crazy. That's the one I don't, I'm kind of hearing, yeah. You know, it's love, it's a whole lot of, I think, that's it. All skirts and it, I was, it's, it's not, it's not, yeah. But the, I think, I think we're hearing a lot of good comments, yeah. Uh, we need a chair, but it's, it's what you're hearing, it's one thing, I was sad, I think, great, so that is must eat, no, yeah, that has, see, I later, I thought, so I know that we really do need a plan, yeah, for all agencies. But the problem is, it's a, it's an, I, President, who, not him, yeah. I, he said, oh, job, it's a, he's a, yeah. I love, I need, yeah, Jordan, that he can stop, no, yeah, hope staff, executive staff, I must follow, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, they need some, that's, you know, Jordan, there are no executive staff, yeah.
To stress the importance of passing the resolution. As a whole rather than doing a continuation like the prior year. Uh, help council. Work with the president to pass a resolution kind of the whole. There's um, this whole continuing resolution really hindered a lot of chapters, you know, there are a lot of chapters. Uh, I heard so many, so many chapters even, you know, close their doors to talk, and we need others. So my question to you, I guess, by them to. Where the resolution, you know, stated how, you know, we want the Navajo Nation Council, the Secretary's office to really. Work together and have a budget at the whole, not do another continuation. Uh, for every point we say, you know. I hate this, I hate for the same thing to happen. When we just barely got our budget today. And that's in. Six or five months and it is unacceptable on the uh, executive department. You know, for them to. Not make it a priority. And just, you know, push it on, make it convenient. You know, we were frustrated, I was frustrated, you know. We had over almost forty some people supplied. And we only had to hire, we only hired five. So when those parents, those community members, and I believe the community gyms, they asked me. What kind of guys are gonna hire me, what exactly are gonna hire me? It really does. Take its toll. On, you know, as a community leader, the state, you know, we don't have the money and everything. Now their response is like, why is there always? An excuse. And then on our, on our part, you know, we've done our. Our job. We should have gotten that money and we should have hired more so many weeks to, you know. That really. No, that really made me upset. Uh, every day I, I wanted to write an email, but tonight we're praying and we. We work with me, we, we're trying to get answers to. You know. So I'm glad that we might have got a budget, you know. If we're not working on our next budget. There it is, that is unacceptable to me, and I don't want the same thing happening again. So my question to you is, you know, with that, how? The council, well, versus the president. If we had resolutions, you guys brought that before.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer, um, Mr. Dalton Singer. I believe that council delegates work at the pleasure of the people. I, I know that each and every one of my colleagues on the council do take that seriously and. In our committee, in, in the appropriations law, it says the Budget and Finance Committee. May do public hearings, it doesn't say the committee shall do public hearings. But this group of delegates here, they said we're still gonna do it anyways, so I'm sharing that with you because. Chapter resolutions, agency council resolutions, they use big volumes. They, especially when it comes to making changes where the entire Navajo Nation, um. We take those agency council resolutions seriously. And even in today's conversation, we're taking uh, chapter resolutions as serious. Um, recommendations to the budget because today we're hearing about public safety. And it's even more meaningful when you have your chapter resolution saying. These are the things that we all agree upon and we all think that should be in the budget. Um, I think that it's not just the president's office because when you take a look at the budget, there's three branch chiefs. So the Speaker, the President, and the Chief Justice, all three of them. Um, they, they, they're, they're the, the drivers of the branch budgets. Budget and finance, we're trying to lead with this as a, uh, address sort of question about the performance-based budgeting. We're, we're working with the numbers, the revenue coming in. Saying we don't have enough revenue, okay, how do we fix that? There's vacancies across an Navajo Nation that are not being filled. How do we work with that money that can be used for other ways and, and so we're, we're thinking like that. And that's why we call out the president's office, we call out the speaker's office, and we call out the judicial office. Is because they need to be at the table when we're having these conversations. Only one here is the Speaker's Office, McCarlo Ruin Horse is here with us. And the president's office, they come on and off. But wouldn't you wanna be at the table when we're talking about money? Wouldn't you wanna be at the table, we're talking about the whole Navajo Nation budget? So if there's a chapter resolution. That states that. One, you, I think, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but we also have to consider that the Chief Justice is the judge too. And her role, she can't be political, so this budget is political because. It, it's legislative and judicial, so you kinda have to. Respect the Chief Justice and the Chief Justice has to also respect the legislative branch and, and how to work from reading money. The president has to respect that too, so it's like a balance in that process. But regardless, if, if you uh, find those challenges as a continuing resolution. Um, I think it just depends how that resolution is crafted, but um, the. The, I've also mentioned. That the previous Attorney General inserted herself in the budget process. And made it challenging as well, so maybe it, it's rescinding that resolution. Maybe that's, that's another discussion to have because if you rescind that resolution. Then the Attorney General is not inserting themselves into the process. Of the legislative branch and the president and the Chief Justice, that's another element too, so. Uh, I think that's what I'll say for now, that. And then Delegate Lusry Alti, but we'll go with Delegate Shalit Posi first.
Um, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for all the comments, I am writing down and taking note. To note. Your question, what? Your question is very important because. Um, one, you're, you're stating with the resolution. You know, a vote for the record from the people. And that's gonna be recorded forever. And so when you get into that place where your community is learning how to speak together as one voice. And we're learning how to speak together as an agency. And then you bring that information to us as council, we're gonna listen to that. Um, or at least I know I will listen to that. Um, and that's how I would make my vote, my vote, you know. Now, I'm newly appointed to the Budget and Finance Committee, and I do appreciate with this committee. That they're really uncovering and looking at all the data that comes in. And so. They're looking at how the different um, departments are moving money around. And then looking at, as what was stated, how much money comes into the Navajo Nation. So you have to start to weigh out your priorities. Are we going to focus on water? Versus education versus infrastructure versus public safety? And you're putting those all on a scale, it's, it almost seems that way. And you're really looking at it with, okay, I only have this much money that I can pay for the service. And so that's where everybody, even the departments, they have to come with their statistics. To share with us, okay, yeah, public safety, this is the numbers we have and this is what we need. And so it's another way of how I'm looking at, we really have to prioritize, and that's where. Your resolutions, if you're just saying, you know, let's work together, that is an important place to start. I know when the budget instruction manual is one of the things that we change is something called tone at the top. Is being physically responsible with our money as we move forward. And that's really important at your local level. In your chapters, you have to be mindful of that. Because, you know, if we're going to provide money for students. And then over here, somebody's gonna go without it. Could be our seniors. So we have to make sure that any money we bring in or that we appropriate or give to. Any department, any agency, that you're mindful of that as well, so all of the stuff that you do, it's really important. And so I do think that you should have resolutions, you should be able to, in your community, talk about it. You're gonna have to say, okay, well, what's gonna be our priority, and I know with all of these things, sometimes it might seem like a, like a, a wish list. You know, sometimes it's like we're blue sky dreaming. But then slowly, as we look at all the information, we're gonna come down to, okay, what's reality? What's our reality budget? What can we really pay for that's gonna benefit, benefit us for now? So that's where I think we're at, I hope that kinda helps, but that's how I see a lot of what we're doing here, thank you.
Seems like you go with a little beyond and try to secure. I really do appreciate those questions.
Thank you, um, sorry, Secretary Treasurer Singer, I was just texting the Chief Legislative Council. And she has some recommendations on what that resolution can look like, she's our attorney for the legislative branch. So Ms. Michelle Espino, could you provide some comments and recommendations?
Uh, yes, Chair, um, thank you for uh, bringing this to my attention and. Um, I understand that the question is. Whether the chapter can uh, pass a resolution to prevent um, interference with the budget process. In order to avoid a continuing resolution again, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so um, yes, the chapter can pass a resolution, um, urging. That there um, that the leadership um, in the positions that they hold. That there um, would be no interference um, with the process. That is um, part of the Navajo Nation code and, and, and the um. Uh, laws related to the budget um, that are passed by council. That um, they allow, that the process be followed and that there not be any interference. In order to avoid any um, continuing resolutions to occur again. And in your resolution, you may want to um, state the impact that a continuing. Resolution had on your community um, to support your request. I hope that answered your question.
All right, thank you, Michelle, uh, does that answer the question? Okay, maybe what we can do, uh, Michelle, while we have you on the line. Michelle and Mr. Tark, can you just take note and um. If Michelle's office, Office of Legislative Council and the Speaker's Office, Mr. McCarlo Ruin Horse, can work on a. Um, like a draft resolution for the chapters, and then we can just distribute that, so. Whether it's Kanta chapter or Mexican Water chapter, whichever chapter would like to pass this resolution and pass this along. We'll make that available um, to the chapters and also to the agency councils. So Michelle, uh, you could help me assign a secretary um, to work with McCarlo to capture um, what you're recommending. That'd be great.
Sure, sure, we can do that.
Great, thank you, Michelle, thank you, Secretary Treasurer Singer.
The last thing I had a concern about was um, how about being responsible with funding? You know, for us chapters, we, when we get our budget, we have to, you know. Do a detailed justification on how we're gonna spend all the money, that's not on the wind system. So with the executive branch and the legislative judicial, can we do the same as well? Because, you know, I al, I often wonder how the executive branch. Yeah, I can contact them, but it would be nice to have it on the wind where you could just look it up and. See whether their monthly allocation in the budget balance is. And also being, um, just being responsible because when I look around. Uh, certain events, you know, I, I see wasteful spending. Um, and it really, it really does bother me because at the local level, we can't. Do the same thing because we're, our hands are tied on how we can spend our funding. And, you know, we, we wish we could buy items like that for our community members for events or, you know, like events like this. But we can't, but when I see other departments or branches that have. Big flashy items, you know, I see that as wasteful spending, especially if it. Cannot be used for the next administration on down. If that's the case, you know, if they wanna purchase items, you know, the, yeah, so be it. However, it should have a logo of the branch. Or the entity, so it can be recycled. The next administration. Instead of, like, right now, I see a lot that cannot be used if there's a new. President that comes in, it cannot be recycled. So for me, I see that as wasteful spending. And I wanna ask Budget Finance Committee, Council members. DOJ, who's the oversight, who's really gonna be there to say, this is wasteful spending? If the chapters are gonna be held to that standard, branches, all the branches should be held that standard as well.
So, um, Secretary Treasurer Singer, I think we have the controller on the call, Sean, are you on the call? Sean McKay, could you offer some comments on procurement regarding uh, elected officials purchasing items with their names on it? Using general funds?
Um, good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, Shana, uh. Uh, Parrish, uh, members of the twenty fifth Navajo Nation Council, Budget and Finance Committee and. Shana, chapter leadership, um. Thank you for the question, um, so the Office of the Controller uh, has been working, um. Pretty diligently over the last few months to implement. Um. New uh, policies for procurement and also a new um, inter. What we're referring to. As the new ERP, which is short or stands for the Enterprise Resource Planning System. And what we've done is we've procured a new software that will turn. Most of our current paper functions into digital functions, uh, which should. Um, do three things, one, it should be uh, a lot quicker. Um. To deploy resources, two, it should be um. A lot more transparent as well as enhanced with uh. Enhanced internal controls so that we can solve some of the problems that we run through now with um. Uh, improper procurements and um. What is being referred to as wasteful spending, um, cause I do think that there is a level of um. With our current uh, paper processes, there is a level of uh, risk that we're um, not addressing um. Without uh, the use of technology and so um, we are right around six months. Um, sorry, four months away from uh, going live with this new system. Um, I was on the call earlier, I had to get off and now I'm back on because I was talking to. The um, team that is helping us implement the new system about getting the chapters on the system as well. Um, and uh, at least start with the non-certified chapters and what that would do is. Um, offer the, the, the flexibility and transparency that was mentioned, I think by Secretary Treasurer, so. Um, should we be successful in this, uh, the, the chapters will be able to see. Uh, budget allocations, they'll be able to do the requisition process. Um, directly out of our new ERP system, which would eliminate the need for the wind system. Uh, and potentially MIP, so um, the Office of the Controller um, has been on. Uh, been in person to two of these budget hearings and now online. Uh, to two more, and this is something that all chapters are asking us, you know, how come it's so slow? Um, I, I believe that Chair Parrish also wanted me to comment on chapter allocations, which is another slow process that has to go between. Uh, OOC, back to DCD, the wind system, OMB sets it up. Um, and I believe on Friday, I referred this to uh, the app, the alphabet soup of bureaucracy, cause it has to pass through so many. OO's and DO's and OM's and Bs and Cs and Ds and Js and before. It even gets to the Office of the Controller to pay for it. Um, so I think what we're really trying to do uh, is take an approach where. Uh, I think the comment I made to Chair Parrish last week was if, if we can't accomplish. What we're trying to do with people and paper, then we're gonna let the technology do, do it for us. And that's what this system will do, so um, you know, I appreciate all the comments from the chapters. Um, I, it's not often that I get to go out and visit chapters, and so hearing the real needs of. At the chapter level, uh, through the leadership of the Budget Finance Committee, I really appreciate it, so. Um, those are the comments I would make, uh, Chair, and just to ensure the public that, you know, we're really working hard to. Um, at the Office of the Controller and, and through the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, and, and even through the Office of the President and Vice President, uh, to make this. Uh, more transparent, make it more accountable. Um, and get away from these paper systems that we have now, because when you use paper. You're risking really three things, one, a lot of human error, which there is. Two, it becomes very inefficient and slow, which it is. And then three, you kinda lose um, the ability to, to react um. Uh, more, more, more uh, quicker, I guess, easier, uh, when matters arise with um. You know, allocations that aren't quite right or don't match, and so simply put, we're trying to break down. What is now about a five, six, seven, even eight step process into a two or three step process. And utilize the technology that we're, we're investing in with this new system to take care of these kinda random. Um, paper tasks that we're doing now, so. Um, the, the Office of Control is happy to report that we're, we're well on our way to getting this, this, we've been working on it for a year now, almost a year now. And um, we're, we're getting really close to getting uh, data migrated from the old system to the new and going live, so. Um, I would say to the chapters, please keep your eye out. Uh, for the announcement that the controller has, has made the system live. And from that point forward, we should be able to be um, a lot faster, more accountable, more transparent. And really better at, at fulfilling the needs at the local levels when it comes to funding, so um, that's, that's what I would offer, Madam Chair, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Controller McKay and Secretary Treasurer Dawson Singer, uh, I know his, his. Explanation was really long-winded, but what this means is that, yes, you'll be able to see people's budgets. You'll be able to see that expenditure drawdown, and so um, this system that he's referring to. It's not FMIS, we're moving away from FMIS and towards a Microsoft-based system. So the, even right now, the Department of Information Technology, they're trying to integrate the chapter budgets. Or sorry, the chapter emails to be fully Microsoft, and so they're, they're trying to get everything on a, like a Microsoft platform. So that our, our accounting can also be Microsoft, reason why it's so important is because for the chapter submits, uh. Let's say, for instance, we're, for Kansas, Kansas Senior Center, Kansas Senior Center, i- if you're gonna. Start doing planning dollars, you wanna know where the money is at. That, then you'll be able to access the funds from your computer to see where those dollars are at. And then you can send an email to wherever that, those, those dollars are and say, hey, it's still sitting on the desk, can you move it forward? And so Sean has this built-in system where not just, we're talking about how chapters can, can be a part of this. So that you can have that direct, it's not, so you don't have to be FMIS certified, everyone can have that. That visual of where your dollars are for your chapter or for the big government, like you're asking. Where's these dollars are, is it moving down, and I just wanted to state. For the record, that the people are asking for that, they're asking for further transparency on where these monies are. And so another point of this is we're trying to plug in Sean's new software. Into the Budget and Finance Committee's website, so that everyone can see uh, ticking um, kinda calendar. The drawdown of dollars and so on and so forth, so just wanted to add a few more comments on, on Sean's big explanation on how we can. Utilize that, but secondly, about your question about the procurement, um, Sean, myself, Sean, this committee. Um, we're working on a draft and new procurement regulations and the procurement law amendments as well. So that, that's expected to be before the council for summer council session, so you're looking to improve transparency through procurement.
The software that Sean's talking about, with that, with all the websites we transfer them over to that same system like Microsoft these? Or does anyone know the Navajo Nation? Typical, our website is um, updating and creating new, um, not designing a website. A little tedious and difficult, so. If it could be all edited into one, no, that's actually.
That's okay, I, I know that we're gonna go through all the public comments, but if you write it down, if you say Division of Community Development should have more money to change their. Website software, then we could do that. Thank you. All right, thank you. Great conversations, great discussions, next is Miss Martha Sackland. Sure, Miss Martha Sackland is going to be Miss Helen Myerson, after Miss Helen Myerson, it's going to be. Uh, Elise Finale.
Um, one of the um, um. Area that I wanted to um, touch on was the ATF running. They leave the um, Budget and Finance, had previous Budget and Finance. Um, committee that appropriated finance for five-year projects, um, the cliche. A hole, um, now we know that um, agriculture project was very unsuccessful. I was continuing to, to go um, the last of the, you know, the government, you know, she enjoyed. Um, agricultural project, it was, if I was being viewed as an economic project, but. There's nothing moving there, to where I see it. I don't need farmers, um, the farmers. Um, one, two, that no budget is probably the most common, the space budget is. It's the same machine that it gave from Kaya Mta, due to. Actually, you can go to find out who's doing their job and he's not. But then, he's not that, but, um, but I also used to work for Community Development. Kari Parrish, so at the time, um. So that was the word I was supposed to start off with. We need improvement, we need change, we need. Specifically, you turn out those, we have oil revenues going in. And I mean, oil and gas. And now she went in there. I would check that. She can't, I, I, I can't, I won't be kidding. I don't want to see that. I think that's, I think that's a bad thing. I'm quite sure. I don't want to hear that. Just I know, yeah, yeah, that's true. I see, yeah, yeah, I'm sure. So I would find that there's time that we have to, you know, put our foot down instead of any other. They thought of Lisa, joined up on top case and other. Those were some of the things I wanted to bring up. Other one was scholarship. Scholarship, 12.4 billion. Maybe your kids have to be trained. And then we go back to workforce and other programs that we can tap into for our needs. I don't talk about you. We can talk about criminal justice system too. For you, here, there's separate mental health. So what you are, you are, you know, what you have, that you, that you have. That's the, that's for other ones. I don't, I shouldn't. I don't, she in town case. That's the, that's, I don't, I don't. So, so, I see, yeah, yeah. Mental health, since the pandemic, I should, I should. For you, she don't have it. I, I, I want to hear that. On there, on, on, I should be this. I don't know, I'm retired. I don't see, I don't know. A lot of people, she don't have mental health. I should, I should subject, they can go with it. I don't, they can't, they can't. I don't, when we go to suicide, we go to alcohol, we go to drugs. Show what they, and our behavior health system. And to help everybody. I didn't buy it, it's not a big deal. I tell you, oh, I didn't think about. So, I don't, I don't want to ask. I don't, the child discretionary. For you, both of them, that's the next. I should, I think, I don't know. So she, yeah, the, the, the program. It doesn't, I don't, I don't. I should, I should, I should. Yeah, I did. For one, they don't, they think it's nasty. That's, I don't know. If you ask me, I don't have discretionary. I don't know, she, she, at the chapter level, the net over there. So I was about to, I'm not something that, I, I changed it. I have the, the network, the cable. Of course. It, I don't. The, the issue, Eastern Amendment, okay, the issue that they, like the kids in Z. I don't, some of the departments has a, there are some things that you can discentralize. I think, like for example, windmill, yeah. They're asking water, they're windmill each one. But they're not doing like the window, they had each one. Although it's, we didn't know that water resource, yeah. Joe, all this outside world, this, this, I was so. So not, so, so, because she went, she, I don't, I need like this. Need that, maybe she stopped. But when it's us, the only had to do was haul water from farms to feed our livestock. John, that's, that's, that's the one, the windmill, I had to, I don't know. I just, that's the name. I didn't have, I don't, and that's, yeah, that's, it should be, I don't go, those come. It's said, we're like that. I don't know, yeah, so we had to wait more days and probably had to re-modify. Oh, oh, surprise. So, I don't know, so, I don't sense that, a lot of these supplies, though, but not a, it takes years, not years, but months. Maybe some years, because I remember when I was at Mini Farm Water Resource. Electric panel, three days, they, they cared on it. And then the electrician that was hired on the water resource had limited knowledge of this new panel that needs its stall. Of course, but a panel there, then the, then the, of, my kid, I don't know. On there, I see, no, no electric. So things like that are happening out there. So I don't, I don't, I wasn't. So, but the whole, that, I don't think. Uranium transport, I think they were on that route. And although, I know, I see tourism, no. If they do touch it, yeah. And you look at their tourism records, they make 10 billion revenue coming in and we're just right on that tourism route. From circle, circle. So, I mean, he's passing off, John, that uranium, she, she, they own that. Change gears, it's legal. I shouldn't feel this behavior. Many spent, I mean, no, it's not from the nation, it's not case, so, I'm happy. John, now, the other, it's not on that. We were presented that, right, uranium all around. Of course, there's tourism, go economic development, that's in there, that's for 90s. Of course, then, I don't, I don't, not both in it. Of course, I was, I know that. I don't, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm. Emergency management, it's over, I'm there, I'm there. We ask, I say, you talk, and the head of, the government, government, the nation. I don't, I don't, I don't see, emergency management, which I'm on that. Then here are hands on, on the boat. We obviously, we provide technical assistance to 110 assailing nation. So if you don't, I hope, a couple, yeah, they're not. So we haven't yet to experience that route to auto-people uranium. It can be monitored in the monitor section. When that, yeah, I'm, 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 they can, other, they got monitor, maybe in the, then. That, you know, you don't know what's going on. So it's inevitable. They, 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 they can auto-people chapter, additional staff. I think, yeah, a planner or project manager would work. Because planner gave is not a project manager. If a project, if, if, it's trouble, eh? Project, and then make the plan. And then we would like to see economic market usability study. I, I think, yeah. John, I don't know, I don't know, RBO or economic, whatever, projects, it is funded in that line item. Because that's really the harder than you're not able to, so. Tourism and economic development. They, yeah, oh, what's that? It's, I'm, it's, it's, in the issue, they is presenting. But we're, we're against oil drilling, any type of fracking, it was, and it's not going to do. So then the other one was giving financial. I don't create, I'm, that, and you should be, then it has not even done, any giving revenue funds. However, we got a seat, or jet, not right now. I don't want to get that, everything. So we don't know where the money is going, we like to see someone coming back. So they got, I don't, I don't, chapter, government, ADP, enhance. So, I should, I think, I think, that's, that's case, so, I think, in that. Let's get back to that and, and give the chapters the opportunity to do that. Although ASC, there's eight offices. I should, I'm not, yeah, one of the three offices that, when it's already budgeted. You can go to the chapter by arranging to hire planners or project managers of which one they want. A, 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 you know, so. Right now, I just don't understand still because they need project managers. I'll, you go back to initial, like, that. They, they, so, for, for, chapter, maybe, yeah, on, for such a vessel.
Yeah, that's, um, this, I just wanted to mention, I have an update on the vacancy for the ship. Our video, which is specifically for the Economic Development Specialists that I know I've been working with the NABU, we talked mission regarding that position. So that position is budgeted from $58,000 at $21,000 for their fringe benefit. It has been vacant, the last time it was updated, since May 17, 2024. So that was in the FR25 budget, meaning that it's been vacant for over a year. This JVA was posted on March 28, 2025. And they have, it has been vacant during that period, the JVA was open. It was open between March 28, 2025, and then it closed on April 11, 2025. And they only received two applications. So we can budget for these positions for economic development, but people need to apply for these positions. I don't know if anyone was hired, but I will say that as a member of this committee, I do advocate for positions in Utah. I do advocate for Western Agency as well. Oil, specifically from Utah. And I ask the Division of Economic Development the same question. So they should be pushing harder for positions that support tourism, for positions that support economic development in this region. So again, I do just want to say that I support your comments and your requests. I just need, I know NABU's commission has some resolutions or intend to make sure that's solidified on the chapter. All right, you decide. I also want to mention that the Division of Community Development, they were given $3 million for project management and at FR24. And by the time we revisited that budget at the last public hearing, they had not spent any money, any doubt. So again, this committee can give money to the executive branch to say, here's money for project management. Here's money for this and that, but it doesn't get spent. So you need to have a conversation, I hope, with people on the call. I just want to ensure that, I'll look. Next, we have Ms. Helen Myerson. Thank you for your patience, Ms. Myerson. I know you've been here all day. Myerson, and then next we have Ellis Finale. Are you still with us? Oh, yes, she's still here. Thank you.
Again, yeah, I'm, 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 I can't see. And thank you for sitting and with us this long. And thank you for the lunch, too. I don't want to cancel. Well, I have a lot to say in our community. As a community, we see a lot in your community as you attend chapter meetings, planning meetings, whatever meetings that's in your community. I try to participate because our elderly, our grandparents, they were always here for us when we were growing up. Some of us, we were raised in a chapter meeting. I want to know that, because in that chapter meeting, you know, that's enough for that, 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 that. So I'm familiar with a lot of things, the history that, that we went through the time when we were small. And, but one of the things that I would like to address is Navajo tribal park. Navajo tribal park, I think it's, it's something that has to be addressed because it brings in a lot of money to the capital, Navajo Nation. And the things that's lacking down here at our community is that the way the park is run or how we see it daily, I'm a tour driver. Right now, I'm a tour driver and that's why I know a lot about the situation that we face every day. And being a tour driver, like, we meet a lot of different kind of people from all over the world. And they dress, they talk about Navajo Nation, they ask so many questions. They want to find out how we can live in this desert area without no running water, without no electricity. On this rough road, you know, daily people, they all water down into the valley. They, they have a lot of concerns and they talk about it. And sometimes you're just like, we're down to it. Do you, where we can live this way? But then, then, but we're not embarrassed to live like this. We've been living like this for centuries. And eight hours, I guess, I guess, it's a goal. We even have to haul wood, haul wood from maybe two and a half hour drive into the the Utah site where Bear Ears National Monument is. I don't, because a lot of us, we don't have, we can't afford to have electricity, running our heaters. Eight hours, as an elder, we have to go out there and haul firewood from Bear Ears. It takes a lot, we have to, I myself, I usually do like eight to 10 loads of firewood to, to let it last into April. And that's the kind of life we live here in Miami Valley. I don't, I don't want to say, you know, and there's, I always tell the tourists that, you know, we're, we live in a tourist area, we pay a lot of taxes, we pay a lot of high, high prices on our food. We do, we do live in a tourist area, we, we pay a lot on our gas prices. The Laguna, oh, you, for Helen, if, and, and, eh, okay. Maybe, maybe the Navajo Nation can do something about it. And our eggs are still like $12 for a dozen. Here at our, our local grocery store. Here at our our local grocery store. Eight hours um. A lot of our um free income or whatever that we own um. We try to stay, we try to support our local grocery store, gas station. Um, because it's Navajo Nation's um property now. So we try to stick around. We get our cocaine. Everything is there. Um, I don't mean that. I I don't die in the evening. So we're dealing with these kind of stuff here in Monument Valley. And also with the tribal part, I guess. A lot of the important ones are down in the valley where um. There's several stops that people go and they stop there. Also, outcomes, you know, then either um the the team outs and then. And it's always full. It's embarrassing. Sometimes. I I I change it. I take pictures of it and I um I do that because I'm embarrassed of it. And I always carry a bleach spray or um. An a cleaning solution. I I carry it with me. I. As a woman, you know, we deal with these things. Only, I think only females would think that far. With voluntarily risk in a dirty mission. And um my husband even now, you know, you do it to make it look better and. So um these kind of things are happening over there as the as I drive daily and also um. There's another business area up there in the view um. In the parking lot, there's this little tiny, tiny structure um. It's easy. Yeah, so maybe the size of that cable right there, but. That will be a cable. And these are people, are people, are local people that um do um. Tour, they and give up a business, they. They're only allowed to to be on that little area. And that little shack, that little booth is sitting on that um area. The rest. You can't, we can't hardly put any shade or anything structured. And why is that? Why is the Navajo tribal part treating our people that way? They make a lot of money and we're being stepped on every day. A holiday um to be sometimes um. We don't get the respect that we should be getting and. And when you're, when you live here, you'll find out. Um, eight hours. People can't get their home site list that um. I'm within the tribal part. You can't kill, you can't build a structure. So a lot of those people that live within the valley, they live in those little storage houses and. Who wants to live in a little tiny storage house, you know? And I'm a picture by the Husha and he's making up all these rules and regulations that people can't. Live the way they wanna live. And these things come up and we talk about it. We bring it to the table and nobody is doing anything about it. Or what's that? I don't. Um, as you, as you know, there's this state line right here. What you're in Arizona, so in Utah. And I think we're um. We're, we're, I would say we're blessed to have. Um, on the Utah side, we have all these structures. We have the new high school, the elementary school, the fire station, the health clinic. The new U S um. U S U is still being built there. In Navajo Nation, they ditched some money for to build, finish building that uh U S U. So um, and then. A lot of the money that's being generated is from the state of Utah. Um, the oil loyalty is from. There's no building on that side. So there's really um a difference between um the area right there. So we need. Some of that money to come back to our chapter level to where um Ben that don't miss love um like um. Our, our, our head start is closed down, shut down. It's not because. Um, we don't have any more kids. It's because the the people that were in there working as um. Patient. Under Western Agency, the young head start, they're not. Coming down to our level to help whoever that's um enrolling the kids. We had like. Fifteen little kids that wanted to go to school and. But that is they all these years, two years. Um, I don't got just that that's change. And they have to enroll somewhere else. So um eight hours. And then even with um senior citizen. Um, I just, they're all um. There's a, we have a lot of elderly that need to be cared for um. Daily, they used to feed them, but now um everything. They don't have anybody driving out there anymore. Uh, no food is being distributed out. Eight hours. Um, also. Um. The housing fund, the discretionary funds, we need more of that in our community. Um, upon the sense of. The crucial years upon the. Especially on narrow canyon area. On the Arizona side. So um I think we need um more funding for that. And then I also wanna um touch up on the sound towers. Um, we all live out of um our our phones. We need to have that internet. We need to have that signal. So um. Especially in a tourist area, I think something should be be done about it. I don't um. Plus Navajo head, Navajo Mountain Road. We asked about it because some of us, we have families and. Um, on today, it's gonna be closer to page or um in that vicinity to to the city that. Um, but to the case of, but you know, um, yesterday's chapter meeting um. This was mentioned and they, we were told that um. The more delays um. Prices of everything is going up and. So I don't think we're gonna get the road on on. So um things like that should be. Um. Why are we delaying a lot of the um? Things that needs to be done in our area. Yeah, all nasty. Material prices are just going up and up and we wait until that. That time to pay for something and. Triple it in in the. I don't, um, I also wanna touch up on the water rights. Um, San Water River over here. Um, I'm a farmer. I I've been planning more. I've been planning water balance. Um. When are we gonna do something about that water? How can we utilize that water? Um, open this case um, many years ago when um some of the leaders were still here. Um. They used to always say we're gonna do something with Mexican. It never happened. The the council delegate back then never get nothing. And all went out. Nothing is being done. So um I think we need to utilize that water. That water is is like that. Nobody's doing anything about it. I don't, uranium. Uranium, um, my parents both had uranium in their bodies. They had lung cancer. So um, yeah, I mean, the whole. It's unclean, it's unsafe. We're living in that environment down here in Monument Valley. I don't, um, one of the main purpose of that's. Really Latin in our community is our local government, our local. Um, I don't know who can do anything about it and can save. All we hear about is D O J. We'll talk to D O J, we'll call D O J. That's all they say, our leaders here. And no reports, nothing comes back to our chapter level. And eight hours. Our, our chapter meeting has been canceled every month. It's been going on ever since last year of August. Yesterday, we had a chapter meeting and it was canceled again. So. Has shot the donning, you know, and. Our chapter officials are not working together. Um. There's always a argument and disruption in the meetings. It even not done. I don't, in our community, we're dealing with a lot of um. Drugs and alcohol. Um, people are selling blue lady um. And it's ruining our young people and sick kids. So I'm. We, we need help in these areas that, I mean, the findings should be um. And some of these areas where um they can get help. Um, are we just gonna live like this for the next twenty years, thirty years or fortunes and shame? So um, when, when can things be um straight up? Um, so how it out that of this? It came to and the Monument Valley then. Um, so we just can't keep saying it's all over like that. Something needs to be done, something. I want my voice to be heard and I want it. You know, um, Shabon Sidak is a ticket to heart and do something, you know? Put some money into some areas where um our community can get help. All the times it's a issue. It's not enough. I I sat on this hard chair, you know? Um, I wanted to um put it out here. That's the only way people here, the leaders can hear you. So it they have this, the law, um, thank you for um. Listening to me. Thank you for my time. Um, I hope.
Uh, thank you. Um, I don't know if the Old Jato chapter is still being recommended for sanction. That's another big aspect to receiving services for the community of Old Jato. Because of the chapter sanctioned, then that creates even more challenges to getting services. But being in, I'll have to get a report back from the office of the Auditor General. But you'll have, we'll, we'll have to take a look at that because um. Delegate Daniels went through that legislation, but the the chapter was on its third review for its capital. Or it's it's C A P last summer. So I just sent to Delegate Daniels about that legislation. I don't know. Um, updates on that. If it's resolved, that's great. I just, I don't know what the current vision is because there's new chapter leadership. Um, and those recommendations are gonna need to come from the chapter because. It's great to uh have this information in front of us. But if you have a dollar amount right here, it says that I'm giving you the paper. They can give you printout of the paper. Say this is this much to this problem, this business unit, then that's how you make change. You know, like we're giving you the opportunity to put. Your explanation and recommendation, the amount you need for the chapter to resolve that issue. And that's the budget. So that's. Yeah. Well, this is a Budget and Finance Committee's public hearing on the budget. I don't know about the process for recall. The question on the card, we probably can talk to the speaker's office a little bit more about the information that my car will get. Answer that question. Could you uh speak into the microphone so we can record your comments? Just come back up to the mic.
Well, um. On July eight. Um, they were, they're, they're saying that there's, there's gonna be a day on July eight to. Um, have a recall. And I don't know if you guys know anything, but um we're looking up to July eight for that to have our. Um, officials to be recalled for.
You wanna talk to the speaker's office? I don't know the process. So you all can speak to my car. Questions. He's right here in the board. This, I know we have a few other public comments to go for the budget and then we'll hit a participation up there. While she's getting that question resolved, we'll go to Ms. Benali. Ms. Ellis Benali and then next to. Ms. Benali, where's yours?
They go work session at they then want the chapter and um. Is she oil. In the just senior citizen center, a renovation. Of the ball. Um, if that's on the job, yeah, yeah, the next item on her. Um, priority is. She um chapters that. I'm not a function that even that this resolution.
Here the very central agency, just. I think it's completed. That was one of the things that my community asks, there's, um. One of the, the major projects as a chapter official. Like, same fishing. I, um, I asked my council delegate and her L D A. Of course, eh, the way chapter orientation, then then he didn't, you know, eh, he that know those are council delegates. For council delegates' projects, that know. Uh, they, uh, um, since a lot of council delegates have. More than one or maybe even up to five or six chapters, you know, eh, uh. You asked him, I don't know, by the test case, although I'd like to know where I can access, um, that information. Uh, since I've been a chapter official for almost six months now, and I'm still kinda. Cloudy, uh, at the. I, I do agree that, um. Chapter, the chapter needs an additional staff, you know, or even maybe at a minimum, um. More money for E P so that we can employ especially in in the rural area that we are at. Um, so that we can hire additional help for our chapter staff. Um, so, man, this case, so, eh, man, I'm, you know, she, huh? And you know, um, one size doesn't fit all, we're all different, some of the chapters are. As where our opportunities for economic development, um, they have many, um. Opportunities out there, for example, Kienta has all these businesses there, and so there's, um, other, uh. Chapters within the Navajo Nation. The scariest resources of money that we have, I should, uh, um, have a job, I don't need. I don't, um, best of all, the heat chapter, that's also the leaky, that's me, that I, um. Kinda really surprised me and I said, um, oh, you're that, that's awesome, then. Where's the interest on this money? Ah, the shot, then, um, there's no interest, you know, I mean. Of all, let, eh, all these dollars that are held by the chapters, it's benefiting. The banks, whatever banks they're there. If this money is, what at the expense of the chapters and the Navajo Nation, you see now, not that interest money. So, possibly, yes, what I was told. Eh, the best of the leaky, um, the bank can't, uh, pay interest on it. Because we're not L G A certified, only L G A certified can get interest on the dollars, you know, I mean, so I'm just like. Really puzzled about that. And then, talking about the bank. Um. Eh, A C S or the administrative service centers and under the community development. I don't, I'm not sure where the spoke process is. Is that a chapter or is it at the C A S C or is that at D C P? Or maybe it's at the bank, so, uh, test case. Um, I've been an official, like I said, almost for six months, I haven't been paid a second. Um, I'm the only, as soon as I got in, I, um. Got to be an authorized signer on the bank account, that took about a couple of months. And then the, the chapter officials came in, it's been three months, but, um. The bank has not, um. Provided authorized signatories to the other remaining officials, so, on the check side, and then, no, I said, no. Um, I'll wait for you guys to, um, get the authorized signatures placed and. My community services coordinator is saying, while we, but she goes through the. The A S C. Who works with the bank and then I'm like, why can't you just go directly to the bank and do that? Well, I guess there, there's a waiting process there as well, so I. I wanted to bring that to your attention on why, how. Under the C P C that, that those are taking a long time. And then, um, the other thing that I wanna say is, um. Thank you for offering us a big stretch of, of, um, last step by last step. I know that young, um, the younger folks have taken over. Um, a lot of the operations and point, because, um, many of our young people, um, they're choosing. You know, ranching and so forth, but the one area that I see out there, um. At least the Navajo Nation where the land belongs to the Navajo Nation area, uh, I. Would recommend that that be improved, I think probably it's just like. Two or three miles and that area gets really sandy and, and really bad. Uh, the other area is, um, park service or national. The forest services, but I don't think, um, the nation has jurisdiction over that, so I know. I, eh, yeah, um, they have not that since, eh, um, hit on some level, um. Continue to, um, encourage, you know, ranching and farming as, um, that is what sustains us. Um, generations. Um, that these people, these younger folks that are get into that, they're, they're learning to be self-sustainable and. I actually go back into ranch and farming as well, and I just wanted to thank the council for that. Other, this, my daughter has station, so I was a patient, you know, and then I had to wait on the road and she, I should, or where they start. Thank you very much, um, have a safe trip back to your, and to your community.
Thank you, Ms. Benali, I wanna share a little bit of information about how our accounting works, so you were asking about. If the Navajo Nation dollars are in the early interest. All the Navajo Nation dollars are in a short-term investment, if they are not already in a trust fund. So, the money is like the permanent trust fund, citizen trust fund, the veterans trust fund, all those trust funds. They have different, um, it's called a master investment policy, they have different strategies on how. Those trust funds are, are invested. The short-term money or payroll or for the budget and just cash basically for the Navajo Nation. They're in a short-term investment, they're in a short-term investment involves cargo and it's at the six percent return to the Navajo Nation. So that six percent return that goes back into the investment income, so earlier when I went through the revenues. That investment income, a portion of that is that we're getting money back, the cash we're not spending. So that goes back into the bigger pot, then it's redistributed to the chapters, to the services, so. The nation is in short-term investments and also long-term investments based on. What, um, what kind of policy or sub-policy they have. So, to answer that question, they're, they are invested. The second portion of your question, you had a lot of questions about. Community benefits, um, and I asked Mr. Taki if he could look up that legislation. Um, and so, it's, it's just a consistent ask and that's primarily a function of Resource Development Committee. Resource and Development Committee is the overseer of the energy policy, the energy policy has a. Section called the Community Benefit Plan, which means that you get money back from. From revenues, like you're saying Kienta has stores or taxation, I think it's possible. There's a different type of chapter, there, a lot of people are familiar with the certified and the non-certified. But there's also a third type of chapter, it's called the A F O, Alternative Form of Government. Alternative Form of Government, there's two of them on the Navajo Nation, is Twonanest, is it local governance and Shanto governance? Those are two alternative forms of government and they have taxation. So, if the community wants to move towards that, that direction, the community can pass a resolution and. Um, as to work with the delegate to, to see how that can be sorted, it's not just the delegate's. Job, it's really the division of community development to assist the chapters with, uh, pursuing something like a different form of government. But it is possible to, to gain those revenues locally, um. So, I, I do appreciate your leadership, thank you for being with us all day today, yeah. All right, members of the committee, um, I'll do a last call for Mr. Clark Talis, I know he had another meeting to go to, more busy than us today. Um, we did get his written comment, so Mr. Rodney Taki is writing that out. Uh, so we did, did take a look at that, uh, written comment and it did go all the way down to Old Starmothers, Good Starmothers. And additional requests for net dollars, so, uh, thank you to Mr. Clark Talis for his comments today. All right, members of the committee, I see no more public comments in front of me, I don't know staff, we have any more public comments. All right, seeing now that there is no further public comments, members of the committee, does anyone wanna offer some closing comments? I'm gonna delegate Lester Gazi. Thank you, Delegate Lester Gazi, I'm gonna delegate Shirley Yazi.
I thank you again, everybody for being here and also to the staff and those that prepared food for everybody. Appreciate that you, um, always come out and listen to all of our public comments. Um, make sure when you're going home, you be safe on the road. Um, then we had one of our commentators bring up a really good question and I want to, um, make a request to Control and Recade. Um, I'd like to get, I wanna know how much revenue comes in from, comes in from the Navajo tribal parks, I think. What she offered out was, um, a really good question and, you know, this is a really. We're driving through Monmouth Valley, Kienta, and so it is a, uh, tourist destination, I do see a lot of tourists. Um, in the area, so I think it's, uh. I believe it's a, a report that I gotta see, if we're gonna be promoting more. If we're looking at economic development for this area, um, we need the data information, so that's gonna be my request, thank you.
Um, I'd like to also request for the Kienta Township tax report as well, so I could look at both of those, um, reports together, thank you.
You, Delegate Shirley Yazi, I believe members of this community and surrounding communities of Kienta are also wondering where their tax dollars go. And those tax dollars are not given back to the Navajo Nation, so it'd be great for the Budget Finance Committee as the audit committee to take a look at that, how those dollars have been utilized. So, Mr. Rodney Taki, we could, uh, start working on a letter to the, um, township, Kienta Township, requesting their tax revenues and also, um. Their last financial audit and statements for the committee to review. All right, with that, members of the committee, thank you for your time today, thank you, members of Old Jato for hosting us today, we do appreciate being here. Um, in the beautiful, uh, Montigny Valley and also, uh. I know my, my colleagues here, many of them have never been here before, so I do appreciate that, that they made the, the trip out today, so. With that, we're gonna conclude today's public hearing at three thirty-seven P M, Navajo Nation time here in Old Jato. It's, uh, thank you, everyone, thank you, staff, for your time, we're gonna meet tomorrow at the Unamazza Chapter in Portland, New Mexico at ten A M.